Called to order the work session of the East Grand Forks City Council for April 13th, 2021. Megan, would you take parole call, please?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead, Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Seeing the quorum is present, a couple little things before we get into it. As most of you know, Council President Olstead isn't here after last Tuesday night's meeting. He got home to get word that his father had passed away. So our condolences go out to Mark and his family. It's been a hard week, I guess, so. The second thing is we've got two birthday people at City Hall today. I see Nancy Ellis is on the line and Megan sitting next to me here is a year older.
Thanks.
Happy birthday.
Are you going to sing?
No, I was going to leave that to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, number one, consider request a zoning change to downtown commercial district. Mr. Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Council Vice President. So I believe I did see Ms. Stye and the representative from the Humane Society, I believe, they are there in attendance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, so they're here. They, actually Ms. Stye has put in a request before the council to see if the downtown commercial zoning district could be amended to allow for the operation of the Humane Society site. Current zoning does not allow for that type of operation. The way the Humane Society, from what we understand, the way they would operate, they have a retail portion, they would offer some veterinary services and some boarding. So with that, that actually goes into three different zonings. Retail is allowed in the downtown commercial, however veterinary services and boarding do not. Veterinary services are allowed in the highway commercial district and boarding of kennels that is allowed in the industrial districts. So it is not, so both of those uses are not currently allowed in the downtown commercial district. So what they're here for tonight is to determine if there is an interest in amending the ordinance to allow the operation of the Humane Society in the downtown commercial district. That amendment would require a public hearing and the surrounding businesses would have then the opportunity to express their opinion on the change, either for or against. And so I believe, as I said, those two are there. I'm not sure if there's anything they would like to add for the council, but to make their case, but again, what I'm looking for is if there is some, if there is any interest in amending the ordinance. So we're, I know Mr. Olstead is available to answer questions, as is Ms. Ellis regarding this zoning. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Council Vice President.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Mayor.
So, back a couple of months ago, I was invited to that space and a couple of things we talked about in there. Number one, we talked about the change in the tenant going on in that space and they wanted me to know that it was very mutually agreeable, that, you know, this new tenant wasn't chasing out the old tenant, it was very peaceful, very cordial, the transition that was going to be taking place on the lease, and I understood that. It was kind of a win-win for them coming in as well as for the tenant who had been there. And then they also wanted me to know that, they know that I'm kind of a lifelong friend with Dr. Peterson over there at Peterson Veterinary Clinic and wanted me to know that their coming here was really to just basically continue the services that they've provided, make them very available to the public and then that that space would serve them very well for that purpose. And I did not see it as any kind of an infringement on Dr. Peterson, Peterson Veterinary, good organization and really two different populations. I mean, this is targeted for folks probably having a little bit of difficulty securing some of those services and they felt like they could reach to that group of people. And to be honest, I didn't consider the zoning and in the future, anytime I'm in a space like this, I'll look at that and think, hmm, I wonder if it's zoned. In my mind, as I walked through, I did think, well, it's kind of like a pet shop. You know, they have animals of all different kinds on the premises and they're in shopping malls here and there, must be sort of an extension of that. So that was the process that went through my mind, you know, A, was very peaceful from the previous tenant to this tenant and B, really not an infringement on what Peterson Veterinary does. It's a different market in a way and a little different batch of services that they would provide. And I guess I could offer, just however this plays out, I know we have the legal hurdles to jump through and we will set a precedent and we'll need to make sure that it's something that, whatever we do here, we can continue to do. It's not, it's not a one-time thing, it's a fresh look at this and say, maybe it can be allowed there. And I'm sure I want to hear from probably the building owner and also, of course, from the tenant as for their plans. It would be my hope, I know we've been pretty careful on all of the things we do in the downtown area, you know, not to let it sprawl out into like outside areas. And so every effort that could be made to contain it in that space, I'd say would be a good effort and including if anyone were coming and going, I would hope it would be through a direct outside exit and egress. And then responsibility for any cleanup and everything, of course, would belong to our, to the tenant there. And I'd love to hear what anyone else has to say, but I wanted to just, for the record, make it clear that this was something I knew about several months ago. It was kind of kept quiet because the restaurant was still going on just a little bit, so it was a hope that it could stay in some confidence. And to be honest, the zoning didn't enter my mind. I really thought I was there for these other couple of things. And once again, if it can be done, I would be receptive to having this go through, if it can be done in a legal fashion. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It was my understanding on this thing is that basically, as you said, Mayor, that this was basically going to be just like a pet store. All the veterinary stuff and everything was going to be done in the Grand Forks place and those animals, when they come over to the East Grand Forks shop, would be perfectly healthy and ready to adopt out or whatever they do there. So I think if that's, if that's the case and that's the way it's going to go, as you said, they have pet stores in malls all over the country. If that's what the owners of the building would like to put in there, I think we should do what we can do to make it happen so they can get that done. It's my opinion.
Yeah, and, you know, is it okay?
Yep.
We had discussed this and we had made this all clear. She's been in there actually for a year now. She actually started renting, I think, in March of last year and so, and so it's not, we haven't had any problems, any complaints, any smells, anything. So the, our plan is, is to continue, as far as, you can jump in at any time. She does all her intake and veterinary and shots, all the medical is done in the Grand Forks location. They want to do all their intake there and then our location was for adoption. And so they bring over limited amount of animals for adoption and they move very quickly. By not having 100 animals to look at and only bringing over five cats, they were able to adopt them very fast because all of a sudden, instead of having this huge choice in front of them, they, it was much easier. And then there's the walk-by traffic, which helps them know, you know, to see them without, because if you go to the Grand Forks location, you do have to make a commitment when you go all the way out there. They're looking, when I called them, basically the Riverwalk Artist was in there and when they left, we started wondering, you know, what can we bring in? And Humane Society came to mind and when I called Laura Lee, she's like, we've been looking for a place. So you had actually said that you had been looking already and when we called, it just felt good and we get along very, very well. So we're looking for a retail location, the animals are taken care of already and then they come in and she might want to expand her services and she can explain that, but basically you do your pet food or your toys or your cages or your adoptions and stuff like that, it's a retail store. And honestly, I'm sorry that I didn't ask earlier. I did not think it would be a problem because I know there's pets at the Grand Forks Mall, there's pets at the Bemidji Mall, never occurred to me about zoning. Again, I am a new building owner, I just started, you know, I just bought this 10 weeks before COVID started, so this is fairly new to me and I do apologize that I didn't ask. I honestly had no idea that there would be a problem with zoning, never even occurred to me. So it will now and I will check with businesses with Nancy before anything comes in, the same thing, I think you were in the same thing.
Same boat.
Same boat, never occurred to me. And when I read the ordinances, I actually have them printed off, there's nothing saying you can't, but there's nothing saying you can either. And so I guess that was the problem. When you read through them, there's nothing saying that you can't. So anyhow, that was our, you know, our thing that we just didn't know. So honest to God mistake and I'm sorry and it, it is hard because she got a cease and desist order on her location, March 28th or 29th, whatever, and she has not signed her contract for the new location. So right now, we are out of rent for Mama Maria's, which they had another year's lease with a guaranteed payment, guaranteed. So we let them out of their lease in good faith that she could come in. And I honestly, I don't know how you guys feel, but this has been a Grand Forks business for years and years and years. They want her badly in Grand Forks. She is willing to come into East Grand Forks. It is a crown jewel for East Grand Forks to have their adoption center in East Grand Forks. This is a huge, huge positive for the city of East Grand Forks, as far as I'm concerned, that all that traffic for all the adoptions will be coming to East Grand Forks, going to the restaurants, going to the businesses, long-term renter. So anyhow, I, I just think that it's such a good business and such a good fit for our mall. And there is no problems with that location, so it has three outside exits, it's all floor tiled, there's a mall entrance, so there's actually four entrances, there's floor drains already in place, water throughout the entire place, their own separate bathroom units and it has the hood in there from the restaurant, so you actually have negative air pressure, which is huge, you know? And so that's just kind of where I'm coming from and I, and I hope that you agree that this is a good fit for the city of East Grand Forks and what a huge accomplishment it would be for the city to bring this business into town. And they have been here with no problems. So anyhow, that's kind of where I'm at right now and Laura Lee, I'm sure you have a few things to say, I hope.
If I may interject here just real quick, Mr. Vice President, if we could get the speakers to identify themselves by their name for, because I know we do have some people viewing this remotely, so if we could get them for their names to the record.
Yeah, for me, Penny Stye and I own River Cinema and Riverwalk Mall, along with my brother.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me here. My name is Laura Lee Tuba, I'm the CEO at Circle of Friends Animal Shelter. I'll do my best to address the questions that I'm seeing and try to answer any questions that you may have. We have been in the space for a year now at the end of March and our experience has been very positive, including working with Penny and Bob throughout the building. It is a interesting situation of, a lot of people are saying that during COVID, we, you know, they've struggled and we've had the opposite, where we've actually done really well through COVID because of having different opportunities and making sure that we're always in compliance. I do think it's not a secret in the room and very publicly being in, on the Minnesota side of things has made our life very complicated already, so having a cease and desist did not make that any easier, not saying that that was anybody's fault, but it's making it very difficult to stay on the side of the river when it's pretty easy to go to the other side, not have to navigate, some of which I know there's nothing that any of you can do either, so I have understanding in that. At the same time, we do have a responsibility to our strategic plan and to several donors on how we move forward. Our experience in East Grand Forks has been nothing but positive. We rent with a lot of different businesses and have had really good experiences and we've supported them throughout COVID by making sure that all of our meals, when we are on the side of the river, were purchased local, locally to try to keep, you know, those businesses going. Also, thank you Mayor Gander, because we've spent significant amount of times trying to strategically plan all future relationships and I do appreciate that time. I believe it's Mr. Helm to answer your question about, I believe I wrote down that you had understanding that it was a pet store and in Grand Forks, all veterinarian services would be handled. And I apologize, I don't know if I got your specific question. So we are a little bit different because pet stores, if you look at a pet store model, they're going to be putting as many animals as they can into cages, which actually would not be approved by any animal welfare place. You would be more concerned about having a pet store because of smells and because of inappropriate housing that can spread disease throughout a city. When you're looking at animal sheltering, we have different standards. So in a pet store, basically if you look at a pet store that you could see within 20 miles here, one, like one wall of their caging, two panels would only be able to house one animal with our standards. So therefore, we're actually at a higher level of health standards, keeping all cities safer and having that higher expectations of being a good neighbor to anybody that you're, you know, going to be renting with. So yes, we would be similar in a model to a mall, which was also why a cease and desist was surprising because we don't actually even have dogs at our current facility and we aren't actually able to even operate our store right now, which has been a significant loss to our income and a lot of navigation because we've had to move all employees out of that space. Regarding the question about veterinarian services, the conversation piece about Mama Maria's is that in Grand Forks, we do offer microchip and vaccination clinics because there's a lot of people, especially with COVID, who are suffering financially and so we are looking at people who are in lower demographics of income. So we work with social workers, we have a really good relationship with the Grand Forks Senior Center, Meals on Wheels, and there's a large population of people that once COVID gets to a point where apartment owners say that if your pet's not vaccinated, you can't have it, these people will lose their pets because they can't actually afford to vaccinate. So that's our target market, our target market and we are always promoting that they use a veterinarian, however, we're talking about people who quite often live by themselves, have very limited income and the only thing that they do have is a pet. So the veterinarian services that you're referencing of how does this play in, is not that we're necessarily having all these procedures or things that, you know, need. A microchip and vaccination clinic typically is annually and we set up appointments that we can help these people who are lower income. Many of the veterinarian partners we have do recommend these people come to us because they are not people who can typically afford their bills when they go to a vet clinic. I do apologize because I was trying to write quickly, but did you have additional questions about kind of the tie-in of where that comes in?
Oh, I would just, again, just more concerned of the fact that it would be healthy animals, it's, you know, that's pretty well, that was my main thing, was that they were already been through that stage and healthy and I didn't know how many they're going to have or anything like that, but.
Sure.
I just, I just compare it to a pet store added because that's just.
No, it makes complete sense.
Easier for most people to understand.
Well, we, we create a business model off of people having that thought process so that our pets are more accepted by society versus thinking that they're the injured or, you know, behavioral pets. So it's completely understandable. As far as the veterinarian services of intaking, like vaccinations and intaking, spays and neuters would happen at our north location, which is, like, we're working on a large remodel project right now so that we can continue to do that. So those pieces as far as, so what's considered to be a healthy animal in our industry is one that is fully vaccinated, dewormed, you know, has been rabies vaccinated, everything else, because, you know, if you have touch contact, that is where these problems can come from with a pet store model because they aren't typically having all those things. So ours are going to be spayed and neutered when they're going on the floor. So all of those things have been taken care of, which makes safer communities.
I believe you said only like 20 animals or something too, or however many.
For spacing?
Yeah, for.
Yeah. I mean, so because like haging, you can't actually get, you know, there was a concern that kind of like a hoarding situation, that there'd be multiple pets and we have to follow standards at a national level because we're actually recognized on a national basis and receive like grant funding for different projects that we have and we can't get that funding if we don't follow these high levels of standards. Okay, so the, I think I've answered questions. I guess our main concern is about timeframes and also with the current cease and desist, we're no longer able to function. Penny has been extremely great to work with. It's been a very challenging situation because she has been great to work with and all of us have really strong feelings about what River Cinema has done for all of us, meaning those of us who work there. It's been a great experience and then we've just always had really positive feelings towards them ever since the flood and kind of like what they've done for us living in a community, so that's really challenging, but I can tell you that our timeframe is short because we are a nonprofit that needs to be able to function and because our construction project on the north side is going to be starting soon, we cannot delay that project because we're going to be going through a longer process. So I guess to be very transparent and kind of put the cards on the table, that's where we currently sit.
Is there any way to lift the cease and desist order or because, or do you can't move forward until you have a lot of meetings? I don't know how this process works.
Mr. Olstead can maybe answer that for us.
Well, thank you. I guess I'm going to address a couple of different things. I do understand that we want to be business friendly in the city of East Grand Forks. We have specifically a zoning ordinance that requires kennels to be in a different location. I understand that they were being compared to pet stores, we're being compared to other veterinary services, but ultimately speaking, other than the fact that they adopt them out, we're talking about a kennel. All kennels have different services to include retail services, other types of things. So what we're doing is we're talking about a kennel, in my opinion. Then what we're talking about also is, is that by opening up the zoning to this location, you're opening up any other individual that wants to come in and be a kennel in the downtown location, the same type of thing. The one thing that hasn't been addressed here is the fact that they're discussing having outdoor, basically outdoor spot for the dogs and the pets to be able to utilize it for bathroom facilities. You're in a downtown location and we've tried to have even dog parks or those types of things in any type of a location or area and we've always turned it down due to the fact that there'd be noise regulations and those types of things. There's also safety issues. I just got two emails from different individuals at this time saying they highly object to it and were asking on what are you going to do when the owners, because they're talking veterinary services, bringing in different pets and dogs and to these locations, what are we going to do when pets are escaping from their owners on the way in? If you looked at the email that I got from the mayor, the mayor had a laundry list of things that we needed to be able to potentially do or should look at before we would allow it into this location. And just by virtue of that, it just does not fit with this location. Now, this is ultimately your, your decision, but it is, it is not similar to a pet store, it's not similar to a veterinary clinic, it is more of a kennel. And I am highly, high on the Circle of Friends Humane Society. Their present location is in a location outside of Grand Forks on the north end, so you don't have these types of concerns from the general public, from restaurant role, from the people downtown. And I also understand the issue that, that the Circle of Friends Humane Society has been put in a tough position. However, this was the very first time that the city was ever approached or even had any knowledge of what was actually happening at the, at the location and what was going to happen at the location. And if the city through planning and zoning would have been brought in, we wouldn't be here right now, there wouldn't be this type of an issue because we would have had the ability to discuss it with them. I know Ms. Stye has indicated that she looked at the ordinances, but if you look at the ordinance, the ordinance allows a kennel in an industrial area and it specifically doesn't allow it in a downtown business area. I think that there's got to be some thought processes when it goes to that. And regarding the cease and desist order, right now, it is not a appropriate use in the downtown area. It does not fit into our current zoning ordinance and until such time as it does, it's, it's not a permissible use. So it should not continue to go forward pending a decision by this council, which would take a process and that process is to be followed. We need to have the public hearings, we need to let the other business owners in town and the other public weigh in. I know that I sound harsh, however, if, if we don't follow our own ordinances and we don't follow our own zoning code and we continue to make exceptions, then what happens is the exceptions start swallowing up the rule and it just, now you have no control over whether it's residential, commercial, downtown, commercial, industrial. And if that's what the city council wants, that's entirely up to them, but I think the public needs to weigh in on this as well. And nobody's taking anything away from the Circle of Friends Humane Society, nobody's taking anything about what they do for the public, what they do for the underprivileged, what they're doing for people that can't afford it. All we're saying is, is that the location should be in a different place in the city of East Grand Forks instead of in downtown business district. And, and I'll leave it at that and ultimately, it's the public's and this council's decision.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Mayor.
So I guess to go forward with the process would be something that I would encourage us to do and rather than to say this is really a kennel or boarding service and Mr. Olstead, you know, I have a ton of respect for you as our city attorney, but there is a possibility that this is just a use that we had not anticipated. This could just be a use that we hadn't thought of because the argument could be made, if, if these animals are not just brought there for a week or a month or a year to be kept and then I'm going to come and pick up my dog in a week or a month or a year, these are animals that are available for adoption, they're available for sale. And so that isn't just boarding animals indefinitely, these are animals that people can, let's say, purchase, just like at a pet store. And they have retail and whatnot and the healthy animals coming in for these services for folks who are challenged economically. So I think it is possible, this is just a use, a use that we had not anticipated, more so than a use that should be elsewhere. Now, maybe we decide that it should be elsewhere, but maybe we decide that it's an appropriate use in that spot and I guess I'd like to see the process go forward.
Thank you. Mr. DeMers, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got tons of stuff. Thank you. So I guess just as a clarification, the retail and adoption piece of this is already acceptable use. We're basically looking at the veterinary services and the animal boarding. Is that clear? Is that correct?
Actually, I don't believe that is correct. Right now, we do have an ordinance that indicates that you can't have more than two animals at any location and it doesn't say it's in a house. It says that it's at any location in the city of East Grand Forks. So anytime you have more than two animals at that location, it would be in violation of that ordinance as well, Mr. Murphy.
So we can't have any pet stores in town?
Well, we could if we had a zone.
Is a veterinary out of ordinance then because they have more than a couple of animals?
No, because they're, they actually have a permitted use in a, in a zoning ordinance that allows them, so that's the difference.
Well, but, but our animal, isn't that a, is that a zoning ordinance or two, are two pets is a zoning? two pets is a zoning ordinance?
I guess I'd be, in a better term, to have a discussion with you about the legality of that ordinance, Mr. Demers, at a different time. But right now, it just doesn't fit into our, into our area. And if it was an office space or a retail space, that'd be one thing. Housing any type of animal at this location, at this point in time, doesn't fit into our zoning code.
So, am I correct or not, that there's, is there any place that you can have a pet store in town?
I'm not sure. Ask Ann. That, that'd be a better question for Nancy.
We don't have pet stores spelled out exactly in any sort of ordinance. We have retail. And just, just so people understand, pet stores and malls, most malls aren't located in a downtown. If you look at Bemidji, Grand Forks, Fargo, those types of places, they're all located in a commercial district, not a downtown district. And so in, in that instance, it's a very unique situation from the start. So, but no, we don't spell out pet store in any specific location of our ordinance. So as Penny said, it doesn't say you can't, but our ordinance doesn't list those things you can do and those things you can't do. It only lists those things you're permitted to do.
Right.
Either permitted as a whole or as a special use. So if it's not listed in there, then we assume that it's a can't do.
It's a positive, right. It's a positive.
Right, right.
Rights issue.
So, so the, so the pet store thing is a little vague, but you know, we do have kennels and boarding, and that's located in our industrial district and was recently added. So.
But by, but by ordinance, that those would be illegal because they have more than two animals at that spot?
And that would be a good Ron question.
So, but I guess.
That's the unfortunate part. I don't, I don't know what to tell you on a pet store. If you ask me if you can open a vet clinic, I know where that can go. If you can say, if you want to say, "I'm going to board animals," that would be in an industrial area. If you say, "I'm going to open a pet store," a, a pet store to me would be retail. So that's where I would fit it. So.
Okay. I guess, and we can have that discussion. I guess, you can see why this takes a while, right? So I guess as far as the, the uses go, I, I tend to want to defer on use to people that can make those type of decisions. You know, whether it's a building order, I, I think Penny doesn't have a, she, she has a, she doesn't have an interest in having a dump, right? Or she doesn't have an interest in creating a bad thing, you know. So I, I tend to think that businesses want to succeed. They want to have a positive image. Obviously, we want, we know that that doesn't always happen, right? So my, my question's on the zoning specifically. You know, we do have, like Nancy said, we do have places for kennels and boarding, and they're typically at industrial. I would imagine that the reason for why that was built like that was because of space. And I think, I don't remember if Ron mentioned it, or whatever, that's, I wonder about, you know, having ample space for boarders and kennlers and those type of things. You know, you go and you look at some of these places, and they have great dog runs and, you know, all these things, and I don't see that as a, I don't, that's my, one of my hangups is, I don't see where that fits, or, and maybe there's a great idea, and you guys are, you know, have the ingenuity and the whatever to get that. But that would be something that if we do create a special use permit, like I would want to have as part of that, a requirement for a certain amount of space per, whatever, for, for walking and doing all those type of things. I would imagine that there's places that are much more populated than ours that have these type of places within their downtowns and uptowns and all those type of things. So I, I don't think it's not doable, and I don't want us to go, I don't want us to say no and whatever. I do, another question I have is, is there a difference between North Dakota standards and Minnesota standards? You know, obviously, these aren't prisoners, so we don't have issues of, you know, transferring across straight lines. But I'm just wondering, if the intake is done in North Dakota, is, are we going to have a conflict of standards between the requirements to get them up to the right health, and hopefully, we could make sure that they require the highest of both of them or something. And I would include that in any type of special use permit going forward. And you answered kind of the cease and desist issue. I was curious whether, I wasn't clear where that was coming from, if it was coming from us or the state or what, but understandably, it came from us. On a timeline issue, would I be correct, Nancy would probably be the best answer of this, do you have a P&amp;Z meeting in April yet?
No, we do not.
So the first meeting you would have would be, what, second week of?
Second Thursday in May.
Second Thursday in May would be the first time they would hear it, and they could do a hearing at that time? Or is there enough time? What's that?
Yes, they could. If we got all the information for the amendment, we could get it into the, what would be the first, or the second Thursday in May?
Right. And then after that?
It requires, yeah, three, three weeks. I need it in advance. So.
So you would have enough time, I think.
We would have enough time.
So then after that, you would need to do an ordinance change from the planning zoning? You would need a minimum of a month to do two readings?
Typically, it's 30 days.
So, would there be a need for a hearing at the council level, or is that part of the ordinance readings?
No, it would, it would go through the plan, the, you need one public hearing.
Okay.
You can hold that either at the Planning Commission, or you can hold it at the City Council meeting.
So potentially, you could have a, an, a permit, or a change to the ordinance by the middle of June? And then there would be a permit process? Is that, would that also, on top of that?
There would be, depending upon how you wrote it into the ordinance. If you wrote it in as a special use permit, first you amend the ordinance, then you come back for a public hearing for a special use.
Can we do a special meeting?
So.
Right, but you can't do a special use, you can't do a special use hearing until you have an ordinance, right?
Right.
So if you want to go, and it, as unfortunate is, it makes the most sense, I would say, if you are going to do this, is to have a special use permit process, because then you can adjust for, you can have, you know, a requirement. You can say, you know, X number of animals per space. You can have requirement for room to go. And I'm not, I know it sounds like it's a long time out there, and I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to give a realistic idea of what the process would look like to you guys. So.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because that is one of the problems is we do need, we're on a timeline.
Right.
And if it's not possible, or if there's any negative connotations to public meetings, or people, you know, like emailing and saying, "Oh, that's a terrible use," and that Riverwalk Mall is a terrible place to go because they want to put a humane society in, neither Laura Lee nor I need the negative. I mean, we want to move forward and stuff like that, but you know, she's also, has to account to a board and stuff like that. So, you know, there, there's a flip. I mean, is it, is it good or bad? I mean, I, I'm kind of asking and, and new to this, you know. Maybe you could explain a little bit about your outdoor area? I mean, what your thoughts are, or if it's necessary, or anything like that. But the time is a factor, and they already have another location in Grand Forks that they can go to with no questions asked. So we can lose them very easily if we don't move fairly quickly. So.
I don't, do I need to say who I am for the person taking the notes? Okay. So, on your question about, is there a difference between North Dakota versus Minnesota intake? Currently, the city of East Grand Forks uses Peterson Vet Clinic for their intake, and the intake that is happening would not be up to the standards of intake for a shelter because they're not being vaccinated upon intake. And the, like, that's part of the standards that we are following in North Dakota. So our, the way that our north location handles it is that we are following the standards that are set more on a national level, state by state. I would not want to answer that because I would not want to speak incorrectly about North Dakota versus Minnesota state laws. I have brought it to the mayor's attention and others, that the intake process would not fit a national standard. So that is a difference. So we would be operating at a higher standard on a national level expectation. That is being said very respectfully. I don't think Peterson's is doing anything to hurt an animal. I'm talking solely about animal welfare and their intake process when I'm answering that question, when you're asking about the difference between intakes. As far as what Penny and I have had conversations about is when we are operating a facility that is, you know, a pet store, or going to be adopting pets, one of the challenges and probably why, Mr. Gallstead, you're getting emails, is that, yes, we do have dogs that we adopt out. I think the important part when you get into meetings like this is everybody being transparent so that you can find a solution that best works for everybody. And it's very important to us that, and I hope Mayor Gander's always felt this way, that we are respectful neighbors. We appreciate our East Grand Forks relationship. And dogs, if the concern from those emails is like, where do you walk them, and how do you make sure that people feel safe? We do everything that we can so that we make people feel safe. You know, we have had a couple of dogs at that location. We don't, our facility, I was, so one of the reasons we're doing the expansion is that we do full bike quarantine for the city of Grand Forks and Grand Forks County. That way, if a dog has bit somebody and you're waiting for a rabies result, they're inside of a facility that has all the equipment to care for them. I say that to you because any dogs that are being brought over have, you know, passed these tests of, you know, being dog friendly, or if they have any special requirements, like they can't be in a dual dog household or something, those are going to be adopted out at that north location because that's considered a medical variance, right? That's not your adoption that you can just do with anybody. Same with pets that are very skittish. We wouldn't want to put them in an environment that stresses them because that goes against the standards that we follow. So it's a little bit different kind of, I can understand why somebody would email that, and I'm really happy that they felt that they could bring that concern forward. So would there be pets that are, you know, being walked? Yes, is the simple answer. We need to be able to walk pets. The conversation Penny and I had was using the greenway for that. Have we ever had a problem? No. Can I say that we wouldn't? I would never make a promise I can't keep. We haven't under the four years that I've, you know, been there. I've almost been there five years. We are trained in, you know, how we walk them in the public. That's why we do so many events and such. But being very fair to your decision-making process, I think that it's important that I'm honest with you about, that that's a fair concern that somebody would have. Did I answer any other questions?
If I may. The question that I have then would be, in this email that I had received, and I believe it was, came through you, was that there's the, the thought that there's going to be an outdoor kennel where the patio was outside at Mama Maria's, and that there'd be a staff person supervising the dogs that would be available for adoption.
I'm sorry.
Is that also, is that also a, a thought?
I'm sorry, I do remember you asking that now. So there was a patio space there for Mama Maria's, and what Penny and I had discussed is that if we had like puppies or a dog, it wouldn't be multiple, other than the situation with puppies, is that they could be out there kind of as like an outdoor, you know, like you can see them and having it fully staffed. So yes, you are correct. I apologize. You did ask that question, and I missed it on here. I even wrote it down, so I apologize for that.
No, there's no apology necessary. I just, I just saw that because that was one of the things in the, in the laundry list that was provided for the services that you were anticipating.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Vice President. As far as having this within, within the mall, I would defer the decision to the, the rest of the businesses downtown. If we did a survey of the businesses, and the most of them were, were happy with this service and not objecting to it, then I wouldn't have a problem with it. I would go forward with amending our ordinance or having a special use permit. As far as the outside area, I'm not sold on that one. Most of our downtown district down there are food establishments, and in the winter, to have a 20 by 20 yellow snow area wouldn't be very appealing to those businesses, I wouldn't think. And in the summer, it's concrete, so it's not going to soak in. How do you clean it up and keep the smell down? I just don't think you're going to be able to do that. And so if we have the indoor, I don't think I'm going to be for the, the outdoor area. At the indoor, I'm going to defer to the businesses, and if the survey comes back and says, "Yeah, they're all happy with it," then I'll be glad to do a special use permit too. Thank you.
Mayor?
I'm back to the, the cease and desist order that's in place. Would there be any chance that that could be selective, and that it would imply that they may not carry out certain functions, but other functions they could carry out, such as all the functions that they were doing in the space for the last year? Can we be more surgical and not shut them down completely and allow what they can do while the other is still being worked out? Thank you.
Thank you. Question for Nancy. Is it possible that we can do a special meeting three weeks from tomorrow?
It does require notification in the paper. It has to run 10 days before the meeting. Because our city paper only runs once a week, it kind of puts us in a little bit of a bind, plus we have to notify neighbors. So when we say three weeks from now, it, it would be a push to try to get it three weeks from now. Ron, I'm not sure with you, could we go just through council, since Planning Commission is strictly a recommendation board and doesn't actually?
Actually, I think we, I think that we end up going through the process that would be utilized on any of these things, which would be go through our planning and zoning. You do the zoning, and then it comes back after the public hearing, and you could have, after the public hearing, you could have your council ultimately make whatever decision if that's the case. I have to double check because there are some meetings, Mr. Riappel, that cannot be done as a special meeting. It needs, they need to be done at the regularly scheduled meetings. I just, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if this is one of them.
Okay, because there appears to be a flavor for it. I'm just thinking if we can push the process along, anything we can do. If it's a push, let's try it.
Yeah, I will look at it and, and see what we can do, because I'm not trying to be an obstructionist. I'm just trying to make sure that it follows the proper procedure and goes through, and the public is notified, and the businesses have an opportunity to, to weigh in.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, and I do have one other question, and I think the biggest one is, is we're amending the ordinance, but I don't know what we're amending it to state. So if I were to do a public hearing notice, I'd want to notify people, we're amending to the ordinance for a specific type of use, which I, you know, is it a humane society, or a shell, you know, animal shelter, or, you know, is it a special use? Are you going to want specific requirements? You know, I mean, some of those can be discussed at the Planning Commission, you know, public meeting, but I kind of need guidance as to if we're going to go, move forward on this, what I'm sending out to the people so that they're aware of what the request is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I can't be the only one who doesn't get to talk on this. Yeah, I would be in favor of starting the process for the zoning amendment, kind of like how Ron laid it out. To be honest, I don't know which way I would vote. I would want to hear from the local businesses, just like Councilman Vedder said, get that input, and then, and then vote with, with that playing a major influence on me, really. In particular, the, the dining and the bar establishments in the area. I, I think everyone understands what their concern could be, but until we hear from those venues, I don't. I don't know if that's a real concern or not. And then just to echo what everyone's kind of saying here is, let's make this process go expeditiously, because there's a chance we could lose the circle of friends, and maybe that shouldn't happen. So that's it for me.
Mr. Helms.
Thank you. It's also my understanding that you're planning on probably having pet supplies in there also, selling on whatever, retail, correctly. So, so it would be kind of fitting in a retail part there also along with that. The other thing being with the ordinance that Mr. Galstead brought up, there's probably a lot of, a lot of residents in this city's out of ordinance right now.
Well, there's businesses on the ordinance.
But, but that's not, the question I have, I'm going to kind of put you on the line here. Before we get into this and start spending a lot of money to get this thing done, because it's going to cost us money, can you, do you have any timeframe that you would be happy to work with? I mean, obviously, it sounds like we're looking at probably a couple of months at least. I mean, it's, because it sounds like you're up against the line right now. So is there, is there something that you could? I know it's a tough one, because it's hard to say, but I just...
It is challenging, and, I mean, I have said it before, and, you know, the zoning, when I've spoke with board members, everybody was surprised to hear about a zoning issue. So apology on our behalf as well, because we weren't aware, and we tried to check different boxes. And so we apologize as well, because it kind of, of course, we wouldn't want to go against anything. One of the difficulties that we're having is we're running up against a construction deadline, because currently, we've moved everything back to our north location because of being respectful and compliant with a cease and desist. And so we are fitting a challenge of, what, what do you do? Because we really can go to a different location that we have checked out, and we've already met with, you know, who we need to, I guess, and there isn't a challenge in place. And so how long can we stay without operating with a second space that we've? I mean, I understand nobody knew about it, but we've been using a second location for a year, and we're about to basically triple that space amount, because that's how much space that we need in order to get ready for this construction project. So the honest answer is, we are starting construction, so we need the space now. And we've been trying to decide, well, is it that we do some sort of a temporary location while we're trying to navigate all these pieces? I'll be honest in saying that there's this hesitation, there's these legal pieces that I want to be fair and respectful to Penny and her business, that if she has to find another renter or whatever, I don't want to hold that up. And I'm also hesitant about the negativity that, you know, could be brought up about it, because we were really hard to be, you know, a respectful business and don't really want to get into the weeds when we all have, you know, like you said, it costs time, it costs money. So I, it's difficult to answer, because we moved into this location a year ago when we weren't quite ready for it, because we wanted to make sure we were ready now. So we're already a little bit behind the eight ball, because we've lost two weeks. So I can't really say that we want to wait much longer. I apologize, because I wish that I could say, oh, we have some months in order to do it. But we don't really have that much time, because we'll be holding up a construction project that is going to utilize our whole north location. And this was kind of the backup for how we would be moving even just items around. So that's the challenge that, I apologize, I can't give you a for-sure timeframe, other than to say that, you know, it was already kind of in the plans to be using this space. So we're already delayed by two weeks, waiting for a meeting. Again, I apologize, we didn't know about zoning. And so that's the challenge that we kind of have in place right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, go ahead.
I know it's a hard question, but obviously, we as the council want to do what we can do to help out Penny and her business in town. We don't want to run anybody out, and it sounds like the consensus are that we'd love to have you. But I don't know, I'm guessing that if we put Ron through this stuff, you know, I don't want to put him through this stuff for a couple of months and, and, because we're going to get billed for it. And then, have you gone, I guess, is what, you know, after, after we went through the process? That's what kind of bothers me a little bit there. If, if, I mean, if you could live with that couple of months and we could make it work, or as the mayor said, if we can do something on this, this order, and it'll kind of get you back in there a little bit, I don't know, I don't know if you ever got an answer on where that was going to go or not.
That one kind of deadened.
Yeah, so, but...
Well, and I think the challenge is then, it's, I mean, Penny has a space that, you know, is pretty large. Mama Maria's is a large space that's been, you know, constructed, ready for us. So it's, it's kind of a rent factor, because if we find a temporary location, that's going to cost us rent as well. And being very respectful, I, I definitely appreciate anybody who's been, you know, watching financials, because I think that you have fiscal responsibility. So I appreciate that, just as I have fiscal responsibility. And currently, we're paying rent on a place that we're, you know, not operating half of a month. And then to add a temporary location while we wait for this, and to hold up construction is going to also cost us. And that's a challenge that, you know, perhaps would be talked about a little bit more here to be respectful of everybody's time and everything. But that is definitely a very large challenge that none of us anticipated.
I guess the one other thing I would want to say is, we in East Grand Forks are very business-friendly. Anyone who's worked with us knows that whatever we can do to give good service to all of our residents, whether they be business owners or people living here in industry, very business-friendly. And so with that, what you're going to run into is this front-end hiccup. But if you decide in the long term, this is where you want to be, then just persevere through this little hiccup and get to where you want to be. It looks to me like you wanted to be in this space, you wanted to be in the neighborhood, you wanted to rent from this particular landlord, and, and we'll see how it goes. Nobody can be 100% sure one way or the other, but I think you're hearing some favorable thoughts, and we'll get some more input. But really, if this is where you want to be, if this is a good fit for your business plan, just hang in there and get out the other end. Because once you get through this hiccup, if you do, and if it's an approved use, you're going to find it's a good place to do business. Thanks.
Anything else from anyone? Hearing nothing, thank you, ladies.
I'm, I'm sorry, Tim. This is Nancy.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I just want to make one, one quick comment. Just so everyone's aware, I, I do have a job to do, which is to enforce the ordinance that you guys passed. It makes it very difficult for me to know what's going on if nobody contacts me. So in this instance, it, it's not in opposition to what that they're doing. I'm not opposed to a humane society. But if I'm not informed, or Ron is not informed, it makes us very, it makes our job very difficult to try to fit our, you know, some, some type of business into something that doesn't quite fit into our ordinance. And, and I kindly suggest that I hope if you, you know, do stay in East Grand Forks, or Penny yourself, that you do contact me, because we're not hard to work with. It's just that we have a job to do, and I had to contact you when I saw it on the news that the Humane Society was moving into the mall. So, so just this process and the length of time and where we're at in this process, I wish it would have happened at the front end, rather than at, you know, at this point in time. Because Ron and I would have been happy to work with you and, and see what we could do at the front end before you moved in, rather than now at the back end, trying to rush it and, and make it go better, so.
Well, I guess, before, before we close this issue out, if at all possible, what I think we would need to, to get from the, from the council there is, is there a direction from a majority of the council to move forward with amending the ordinance or not? And if it is, yeah, like Nancy had said, we would probably want to know what, we would need to know, kind of, generally, what would you be wanting to, what would you be amenable to, to including? Would it be like the kenneling or, you know, along those lines? So I think before we, we head out, if we could get maybe a consensus or an idea if there is a majority support for that.
Okay. I think there is a flavor for it. Mark, Mr. Demers.
I guess I would do two tracks. I would say...
Mr. Demers, is your, is your mic on?
I didn't want to hear, you'd hear me snoring before. No, just kidding. I said, I would suggest that we move on two different tracks. The first track would be a simple city ordinance adjustment, and I would think that we could have potentially a, and if we want to discuss it now, an amendment to the, the city ordinance on the 95 dot 1 six, keeping transporting treatment and housing the animals in foul, which goes to the, the number of animals allowed. I think you would basically, you could simply change that section B, the keeping section, and it's an exemption list. You could add one that was number six and say for retail purposes or, and, or, you know, retail purposes. We could have that done. We'd have first reading next week. So in three weeks, you could have that ordinance, which would make the retail portion legal use, in my opinion. Ron, you can weigh in on that after. Second track would be to forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a special use amendment to the, the commercial, downtown commercial district zoning ordinance. And that would be in June, I think, for their Ju-, or May 13th meeting, they could meet and discuss that. That would come back to the city council, 518. We'd, first reading, second reading would be 61. From that, I don't know what that permit, it would depend on the language of the permit, how long it, that process took. I don't know if it would have to go back. I would imagine it would have to go back to planning and zoning on the 10th of June for the application for their, or it could go directly to you, or depending on how you wrote the, the ordinance, I guess. And then from there, it could go to the city council for passage that next week. So you'd be talking, on the retail side, you'd be done in three weeks. On the boarding and whatever, you'd probably be butting up against July, in my opinion. Sorry, I'm just spitballing here, but, and that's a pretty, that's basically no, you know, special meetings or anything. That's just following the traditional way. Now, I know, Ron, you've talked, there's, there's some, there's obviously some notification requirements and, and all those types of things. You know, I would say, to Clarence's point, the, the idea of a survey, I think you're basically getting a survey if you notify in that hearing, you know, at planning and zoning and the ordinance. I mean, you're getting, if people show up and talk, that's where, that's their survey. I don't think you need to have a separate outside process of survey or whatever. As long as we have a good notification process, which Nancy's usually pretty good at. So that would be my recommendation. I don't know if that works with people, or if that gives you enough time to do the retail side or not. And it would require passage and all these things, too.
Question for you on the use. Do you want it listed as an animal shelter, or what type of use?
Well, I guess, could I, could I interject here? I mean, that would be one thing that we, we certainly, we would need to clarify, but I, I guess, just as the administration and for putting this together and, and moving forward on it, I guess, we could maybe, if we could hear from the applicant, the potential applicant and the potential property owner, if, I guess, if that's, if that timeline would is unworkable for them.
And that, that would be the other thing that I was going to add, David, after. Sorry for you, was that I was going to ask Ron if we could do the zoning ordinance and the special use permit, if that's how we want to add it concurrently, with the idea that we could approve the special use if the ordinance is amended. So that the, the, the special use would be on hold until the ordinance is amended, and then the use, you know, if, if it's approved, then we could go ahead and issue that, so.
I'd have to look at that, but I believe that that would be a viable process.
So then we wouldn't have to go to a June Planning Commission meeting. We could hopefully do it all concurrently, so that it would be done, you know, by the, you know, as, as soon as possible. That would be the quickest way.
My only question is, is until that special use ordinance was finalized, how you know what the app, permit application is going to have? Or does that matter? I mean, you, I would think they'd want to know what they're applying for.
Well, and I guess there's a lot of other questions, too, Mr. Demers. And the one of them is, how many animals are we actually, what's the maximum number of animals that you think you're going to have at this spot? Is she still available?
She's writing.
I guess my recommendation, before you speak, would be that if the council is, is on board with that type of a timeline, I would imagine that there's plenty of businesses out there, shelters and all these things, type of things that are around, that would have a, a standard that would require, we could just, we could do it as a rate, right? Like per square foot, you can have X amount of animals or something like that. And that would leave that up to a staff and an outside discussion to bring back to planning and zoning to, to fight over or work through.
Sure. I guess my question is more for this meeting, when somebody comes in and asks, are you going to have two animals or 100 animals, then you have some type of an answer.
Regarding the question of how many animals maximum in this spot is, we follow the ASPCA standards for per square foot. The answer's not very clear. I apologize for the cloudiness, but when you're looking at a rabbit versus a dog, it's different spacing. And the flexibility that Mama Maria's provides with portable cages is that we can move around and have, you know, these different spaces. Kind of going back to how we were discussing, it would be a lot less animals than you would see in a pet store, because we follow the ASPCA standards. So that's kind of why I described that caging to you in the beginning, is that if you're looking at kind of that pet store model, where they're holding multiple puppies, we're allowed to hold one. And so we kind of, we're trying to throw around numbers with Nancy at one point, because we're trying to provide that clarity. And that's kind of the challenge, is I don't want to misspeak, especially in, you know, such a public setting. When you're looking at, you know, well, how many cats can you really fit in a space like that? I believe I said, you know, like a maximum number of like 20 in that type of spacing to provide them, you know, like all of the pieces that we want to make sure they're, that they're, you know, not stacked on top of each other completely sanitary. If you spend time at our north location, you can't smell animal in it because of the type of standards that we're following. So you are correct in saying that there is national standards that we follow and we're recognized on a national level, because we are following those. So it's not really based on square footage, it's based on what type of animal. So you can't have predator and prey in the same room. So if I have, you know, hamsters, we can't have cats in that same space. There has to be a certain amount of spacing before you have that because of the type of standards. So if you're walking into a typical pet store, you're going to see predator and prey. You're going to see these pieces happening, which we can't actually do, because regardless of what all of you do, we would be shut down on a national level, you know, with our things. So it's a little bit challenging to answer, but I would say that, you know, it's safe if, for like, you know, how do you picture it? So another, if you put like a dog into the space, such as where everybody, if you've been in Mama Maria's, where that meeting room space is, the max you could have in that space would probably be two dogs or like two litters of puppies, right? Because you can't have something that doesn't provide them with that shelter and, so that they don't have fear. So when you start lining up multiple, like that space, there's maybe three. I don't think three could go in there. I'm not sitting right in that room. But if you're looking at a space like this, you would have four dogs in this room. So to give you an idea of the standards that we're following, so I know that that's not right down to square footage, but it kind of gives you an idea of if you, you know, if there's hamsters by you, the closest place that we could have a cat is where the mayor's currently sitting. So kind of to give you an idea of how many can fit in that type of spacing. I apologize. I apologize. I know a lot of these answers are great and that makes this very hard. So I apologize for that, but hopefully it kind of makes somewhat sense.
Mr. Mayor. Um, we're in kind of a unique situation here too. You've mostly rehabbed that space, have you not? Has that space been rehabbed for this purpose?
Uh, Mom Maria's, uh, it is down to bare bone. All the freezers are gone, booths are gone, everything. It's completely empty. It's down to the bare floor. And we already lost one month rent. And so they won't sign it until this is passed. And so if you go into like four months, you're talking like, you know, it's thirty-five hundred dollars a month. So it is down to bare for floor and stuff like that too. So there, we both have a certain amount of pressure. And um it is, yes, it cannot be, if they want to do a restaurant in there, they're going to have to buy all new booths, grill, fryer. The only thing left in there currently is the hood. That's it. It is bare bones in there. And we are currently in there uh re, re uh surfacing like the, the walls and stuff in there and taking out tile and replacing tile and stuff and getting it ready.
How long will it take you to build it out for your needs?
Uh, we were going to be moving ready April first for like kind of soft opening using certain spaces. Um, like I mentioned, they're portable kennels. So we are going to be kind of moving them around as we go softly opening, similar to the location that we're currently in. We did kind of that soft opening. And then kind of that full grand opening where, you know, we kind of know where everybody is going to be and everything and how that's going to work. And that date was planned for July first.
Okay. Um, for the process of, of going through, to try to visualize, you know, because it is sort of nebulous to how many animals and whatnot. I'm sure you have all your diagramming done as for what that layout looks like inside there. And you could actually help us a lot. Not that, you know, we're going to obligate you to do that, but if we're really trying to visualize, what does that space look like for this use? Um, those, those diagrams and, and renderings and anything you have could be very helpful in the, the planning and zoning and, and we making our final decision as well. And then back to the question, is there any kind of limited reopening that they could do in the meantime? Thanks.
You addressing Ron with that or?
Whomever would be the one.
Well, I guess I'll have to answer your question uh after giving us some more thought instead of right now. And we can meet on that tomorrow if you need to.
Sounds good.
And I just wanted to follow up with David's request is that I guess since Penny and uh uh the Humane Society is looking for the amendment, if they have any idea of how they want the ordinance amendment, how they wanted it to read, you know, that would be helpful for us as to how they wa- I mean, they're the one making the request. So, um.
And there are, there are probably some model ordinances too of, of humane societies being used in other cities, right? So we can find some model ordinances as well, I would think.
When do you need that, Nancy?
Uh, Friday.
Can you ladies do that by Friday?
Honestly, I not sure about ordinances and things like that. That's not, you know, I run a business. I'm not in city or government or politics. So I honestly may, I don't know if you know, or if we can get Ron to help us with that, but it's not something that I I'm familiar with, I should say. You know, I've never been asked to write an ordinance.
I think it's going to start with what services do you want to provide at that site?
Okay.
That's going to be the starting point. And then what intentions do you have of, of keeping it contained to that site and not having any, any adverse effect on the neighbors, which I believe you, you have a plan for all of that. I have high level of trust that, that you're going to be super courteous of everybody around. I, I don't have a concern. But those are the kinds of things. What services do you want to provide and what safeguards are in place to make sure that you're good neighbors to the adjacent tenants and properties?
Right. And if there was a strong veto in the business community that they didn't want it, we're not going to move forward. You know, if the, you know, I'm not going to push the issue. You know, we want this to be a welcoming. It should be positive. It should be well received. And if for any reason it's not, you know, you know, we got to let that go. I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to try to make any of our neighbors upset or anything like that. I think they should be very excited to have this in our community. So, and again, um, I will ask Nancy and, and stuff like that on anything in the future. I honestly did not know. So, you know, both of us have apologized and we really sincerely mean that. I mean, I will ask before any new business goes in, whether I think it's just standard or not. Well, it's just an email. It's just a phone call. So that is no problem at all. And the only reason we're trying to expedite this is we honestly did not know there was a problem. So anyhow, I do appreciate your time. I know you guys have been here for an hour and fifteen minutes. This probably is overrunning your, your normal meeting and stuff like that. But I do appreciate you taking the time to hear us. I wanted to come in person and I know that she did as well because I have a hard time with, with like the Zoom meetings and stuff like that. And I'm an in-person handshake person. So I agreed to do this without even signing a contract because I'm a handshake person and I meet you in the eye. And this is an honest straightforward business. So if for any reason this doesn't work or the community isn't receptive, we will bail, you know? Not bail, but you know, because we don't want to waste your time or effort. But if it's not well received, not wanted, we, you know, we are okay with that. You know, I'm not going to push the issue or make a big, you know, deal about it or name call. This is not how we do business. We want whoever's in there to feel welcome in the community and our business environment and by the city. So we need to be welcoming. And if for any reason we're not, we will find another use for the business. Okay? But I do appreciate all your time and effort. And we do want to move forward, but like again, you guys all know we're on a timeframe. So I appreciate you guys, your answers, your questions and everything that you put forward. It is appreciated very much so. And sorry to put you in this position. It was, it was not intentional.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, very good. Moving on, number two, discussion on trespassing complaints. Mr. Murphy.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I believe we have the um, yeah, yes, I do see, we do have uh the person that had contacted me, uh, Mr. Muellerbrook uh is um here with us via Zoom, uh, so he can answer any questions. Uh, we've, over the last few years, we have received some complaints uh about people trespassing on the levee behind the houses on Eighth Street there between nineteenth Avenue Southeast and Twenty-third Avenue. Um, I believe you have a map in your packet there with the area highlighted in pink. Um, the complaints mainly focus uh on the fact that the pedestrians are able, are walking uh on that um, on the top of that levee and are able then to see into the back of the houses um in there. So uh, Mr. Stordahl and I have been out there a few times uh checking this out over, over the last several years. There currently are signs out there um saying that the trail ends and no trespassing. Um, the response that we've gotten though is that um it does not designate that it's private property, uh, that it's not city property. So people have been responding, saying that um, yeah, that it's city property and that the, the property owners down there don't, don't own that. Um, and the other thing that I think where it leads to it is how that, that trail, when you're coming from, I'll, I'll call it the west, going to the east there. The trail uh goes up and over the levee and then goes back um down on the, on the dry side of the levee, back to the street. Um, and I think if there's people that want to continue on their walk, they just continue on at the top of the levee um where the, where the trail stops or where um, you know, where it ends at, at the, at the top of the levee. And then they just keep walking along the top of it. Um, in checking into this, it seems that there's um kind of a long history to this particular issue. Um, and it's appears to be one of the only areas in town where the uh property owners own underneath the levee and then back to the um, back to the river. Um, and so as I put in the packet here, I think one of the things that potentially we could look at is if there's um, if that property could be acquired by the city and continue that trail along the wet side of the levee, it'll probably keep people off there. Um, because I don't know, signage would, signage may help, but I don't think it's going to solve the problem. So I guess we do have uh Mr. Muellerbrook here. Uh, he can uh kind of elaborate a case if, if I missed anything or elaborate on anything that I, that I may have. And I just want to take a minute to uh, to tease Mr. Muellerbrook as a veterinarian. I noticed you didn't weigh in on our previous uh discussion there.
I have my thoughts. I'll keep them to myself. Um, uh, that stuff. This particular issue has been since I bought the property. Um, I was told that we cannot put any signs up there because we needed permission from the Corps to put any signage change on there. When I bought that property, I was assured that it's very private. Um, and reasonably, I've been trying to be very politeful to everyone that comes on there. Uh, hey, this is private ground. Please don't wa- I don't walk through your backyard. Please uh, don't walk through mine. Um, but the resounding answer that comes back to everyone is this is, this is public ground. I can go where the heck I want. Um, if anyone walks down there, you can also see the damages being done by four-wheelers, all that kind of stuff. I respect the police situation here because if I see someone up there, by the time I call them, they're gone. Um, it's just a very bad thing. So I wanted to focus on education first to at least, um, okay, let's put some signs up says land beyond this point is privately owned. We shouldn't have as, as residents and landowners, we shouldn't have to be said prove it. That's the big one that gets told us all the time. Prove it. It's not your land. And uh, and I, and unfortunately, we got put into a situation, I bought this after all the stuff, um, even the my neighbors that they've bought into properties along there. So it's kind of been a, a bad thing. And by the time they get to my property, you know, they start at Mr. Gander's uh side and um they're, they're already three, four houses in, or they start on the other end where the trail ends. Um, it, it's, they're already committed. Um, police aren't going to be able to get there in time to say, hey, get off. And when we have called, I had, this is a couple of years ago, I had one individual that came on there multiple times. I asked him politely. I finally called the police and I said, I'd like charges pressed. And the response from the dispatcher was, says, you seriously want to press charges for someone walking on the dike? I ain't coming out for it. So that was the, it's kind of, I was like, fine, I'm just backing off on this. But now it's um, in the last year, obviously with COVID, people want to be out. Um, myself personally, I wouldn't be opposed if there was some agreement, the city said, hey, extend the, you know, the walk path on the backside. I couldn't care less what happens on the backside. Um, come with a proposal. I'm fine with it. I, do I think other landowners will go with it? I don't know. That, that's up to each individual person. And I think that's the, the dirty water here. But I thought private, some signs up there that at least designate that this land is private. Um, subject to trespass laws or something like that. Um, we could have discussion on what language is appropriate on there. Um, I think the maps need to be updated. So people, because we've had a mud rudder, uh, the mud or tough mudders or those some organizations that have gone through a couple of times and on the map, it just shows the trailhead ends and then it's kind of a gray zone, but there's no designation on the greenway of what that land is. And even to the east of us, is that city ground? Is that, you know, is it for public use? There's questions about that. Even the DNR has been off on that. So I think there needs to be an updating of, and a clarification of what that land is so that people can readily see it from the city standpoint. And then the third thing I requested was um a way to notify the, you know, the, the residents on the point that this is private, you know, because it's the same people and very belligerent um that go up there and this is, I'm going to go where the heck I want. And I'm just tired of being put in the, you know, that I'm the cranky guy. And it's not just me. A lot of the residents are just tired of it. We haven't gotten support. Um, you get tired of it after a while. But uh, I'm also don't uh think I should have to worry about people looking in and seeing my wife change in her back. You know, it's very obtrusive to see them walk on top of there and especially how close they are on our situation. Um, that's where I'm at with it. I would like some help. And I said before, I was told that we can't put any signage on either end uh because we had to have permission for the uh Corps. And that's kind of where it ended. Um, I would like to see signs on at the trailheads and Mr. Gander's side, you know, that clearly designate that this is private. That's where I'm at. So thank you for your help. Hopefully we can get something uh planned, you know, because there's other things that need to be fixed uh on this uh greenway part of it too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess I could toss in.
Mr. Mayor.
Darren, I, I like the way you're coming at this. Um, the way the dike runs behind the homes, they, the folks who walk up there are kind of elevated and they can just kind of look right on straight in. See me dozing off, watching some old western or something at the end of the day. Um, so it is a good idea to, to treat that as a person's backyard. And, and it is a unique circumstance because as I say, it, it's even elevated right there. So I like your approach also that says, you know, let's just start with an educational process. Nobody is looking for, you know, a police stakeout and picking people off there and saying, okay, we're taking you down to the station. Um, but just make them aware, really. I think people are, are good and, and they're courteous and they're great neighbors. Once they know this is really people's backyard and not part of our walkway, hopefully they will respond and say, you know what, there's lots of trails in our city. We have the street, we can walk our dog on that side. And I have to also agree with you, Darren, on the, on the way down low, if someone walks along the trees and, and whatnot, um, nobody's going to say a word about it. It's just the top of the dike that should really be off limits. Thanks.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you. Um, thanks for coming, Darren. Um, this has been an issue for as long as there's been a, a levee in that area. Um, I've always said, and not only in this place, but you know, in our downtown, you know, LaFave Park and all that kind of stuff is when people want to go from, from one place to another place, they generally find a way to get there. And unless you give them a good path, they tend to take the worst path that you could take. And whether that's right or wrong, it just, it seems like it's human nature. Uh, I think, I thought we did put signs up at one point. Um, you know, and I know we, there was an issue with motorcycles some time ago. Um, we did some stuff with uh snowmobiles, patrolling at one point. Um, and like I said, and to your point, a lot of those people like on the dirt bikes and stuff, um, were actually people from right over there. Um, so I, if we want to do, if we want to do the, the education, I guess we can try it. I'm pessimistic about the, the outcomes on that. I've, I've said for years that what that needs, and it's not just in that area. The city's had issues, you know, and Mr. Stordahl can talk about this. Um, all along that levee, even as it goes around to the east, as it goes down to the south and ties in with thirteenth, um, we've had issues with people, you know, driving on it, walking on it. Um, I've said that what we need is to either to what Mr. Murphy said before is either purchase that property or even, I mean, if you could get a fifteen-foot right-of-way along that toe of that levee and have the city come in and put a pave or a paved trail along that bottom, I think would, I think it would do uh, it would be a huge benefit for all involved. I think it would allow people that access. Um, and I think it would allow for people that live there to privacy that they need. Obviously, there's a cost to it. I think it's about a mile of, of paving or whatever. But I, it's something that I thought is a great idea. I think, you know, and you guys might not think it's a great idea because you live there. But I think you could, you could spruce up and develop that area on that point. That used to be a borrow pit over there. You could put in, you could dig a little fishing hole or, you know, like they do over in um, what's the name of the park over? Ryan, Ryan Lake or something like that. Maybe that's too much traffic that you guys don't want over there. But I think the, my point is, is if you give people the right path, if you make something nice, people tend to respect that. Um, if you don't give them a path, if you make it shabby, if you, people treat it that, that way. So that would be my, my kind of request to you, Darren, is, is, is that something like a fifteen-foot right-of-way? Um, you know, on the wet side of the levee, is that something? I mean, you can't answer for everybody, obviously. But I mean, is that something that you would be interested in or not?
I think I would rather just flat out, uh, I think you got a bigger problem right now on this. As I appreciate uh Mr. Headland being on here, but we can do what we want, but there still is, we go down there and there's kids or they're drinking, they're, they're raising heck. Um, Mr. Peabody was telling me that uh there, he, he felt that there was someone that was down there muzzleloading. Um, there's not enforcement on that side of the dike. And people know that. Um, I've had officers come that, um, two years ago, Ron Erickson was there and he got into an issue with a, a neighbor walking. And it got pretty heated. And I think they both got, he cited for, because the officer didn't know it was private ground. And he got, both got, both of them got cited for a misdemeanor. Um, so I think it has to go hand in hand with how is the city going to enforce um when people are doing their side-by-sides? Um, people are ripping things up. Um, I think. I think myself personally, I'd rather just buy it and be done. And then I, but the only way I would sign off on it is I'd need an enforcement piece that if people are on the top of the dike, that I have reasonable assurance that it's going to be enforced. I don't know how that's going to be done. But that's why I think there needs to be a clarification of these areas. I agree with your comment, Mark, that people are going to go where they go, but I have a right as a property owner to say, hey, this is private land. And I don't think there's a respect in general of people's private property in East Grand Forks. It just, you know, this, this thing came to a head because I confronted a person and I can't say a hundred percent, but the next, that weekend I ended up with dog crap in my mailbox.
Well, and just so you're aware, I'm not, I don't want to victim blame. I, I do think that you have your own property rights and, and those type of things too. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm trying to find a pragmatic way forward.
I would be open to some discussion and I think it's up to the city to say, what can we afford? What can we do? What kind of enforcement so we, that, that is reasonable for the police department? There's other things. I get it. There's drugs and all that other stuff that going on. And we just want to make this spot, you know, I have no problem with someone walking on their side. I couldn't care less if someone's snowmobiles under said a dike. I don't like it when there's potentially injuries. My kid slotted down the backside of the dike and they almost got ran over by two snowmobilers.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that's a safety issue. I got kids down there, you know, next to the water. This one didn't have us, but we had kids under an influence and you, they're in and out swimming down there and they were clearly under the influence. What about a drowning? Those are the things that I worry about as a liability since I own the land. I've been told that not to really worry about it, but it's a concern. I hate to have something else going on. They said, that's why I thought they put up the sign it, let's start with education first. I agree with you, Mark. Is it going to go real far? But at least as property owners, we can say, the, the sign that you're referring to is a sign that's everywhere that says no trespassing, city of East Grand Forks. That's it. So everyone, I get it on the, if you're a resident, you take it that it, that's public property. That, that's where the, the barrier comes here. And so that's why I thought let's, let's educate them that this is private ground so we don't have to defend ourselves or have to come out with our paperwork that says we're privately owned, you know, that this is our land. And then secondly, make it something that, I think we ought to give some teeth to the police that if they see people ripping up with side by sides, they doing various types of things, that they have the ability to enforce it. That's my take on it.
Yeah, absolutely, Darren. And just so I could follow up.
I'd welcome a proposal. I, I think there's lots of different ways you could do it. Whether you get everyone to sign off on it, different story.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I just want to follow up quick with, with Darren. Yeah, I think you're right. I would, and let Ms. or the chief kind of answer. I would imagine that part of the problem is it's difficult to get back there, right? I mean, it's, you know, for the police, I mean, they're not going to drive their, their squads back there and stuff like that.
They've gone down there with the cars.
So, but, but I guess I, it would be interesting to me, and I don't know the answer to this, and I wouldn't make a good lawyer because you're not supposed to ask questions that you don't know the answer to, right? But what the, you know, what's the case study on Eighth Street going west of the, of the, up and over, you know, of where the trail goes up and over? Because those people have a trail on the bottom. Do they have the same type of issues that you guys see? And I, I would, I mean, there's obviously different answers to why, but I think the answer is probably is because they're given a clear path on the bottom to walk. And I don't think, I mean, I have, well, nevermind. We, I would just imagine that that's the best long-term solution, whether it, it works in the, in the acute phase or not. But like, let's, if Jason can work on some signs or whatever to try it, but I think as a long-term goal, we should look at trying to connect the dots there and, and have a more long-term solution. Thanks.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. I, I agree with you, Mr. Demers. I think we need to do some, and with Mr. Melonbrook, I think the, the least and the quickest thing that we need to do is, is get signs on either end that says this is private property from here on forward. And then long-term, work with the, the property owners out there and, and you're getting easement, as you say, and extend the trail or buy the property back there. But I think at the very least, within the next couple of weeks, we need to get those signs on either end that, that designate that this is private property from here on forward. And that may help. And if nothing else, it's the education process that they can't argue that it, I didn't know that it wasn't city-owned property. I mean, they walked right by the sign then. So I think that's the least that we can do. And it needs to be done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, sounds great. And I like, if there would be anything to extend a trail, that's quite a process because you think of where does the trail end currently? What would be the venue that we're trying to open up and get people to? And maybe how does it even connect to another section of trail? So that's really quite a process. And I do think that the majority of folks up on top of the dike back there are, are a lot of local folks. They're not the ones walking on through, you know, to a 10-mile walk or run. They're out for a scenic walk with their kids and their animals and, you know, a lot of kids with strollers and whatnot. So I feel like it is, it's a, it's a lot of close local traffic up on top of that dike. And an educational process can help. But if we are going to extend the trail, as you know, how many times you're doing property acquisition and all of that, it's a, it's a bit of a process. You'd need a lot of buy-in from a lot of residents. And then a good strategic plan about, so the trail ends here, where are we trying to get them to? And, and how do they get back off the trail when they're at the dead end of it? So I do think to, to take care of the matter before us, it is signage, education, public awareness, that sort of thing. If I ever have a concern on the backside of the dike, I suppose it crosses my mind about liability. And so we don't, we don't want them engaging in dangerous stuff back there. But more even than that, if they have gatherings of lots of people with alcoholic beverages, you know, basically parties gathering down there, that's a concern. Nobody would want that. And, and the outcome of that just could be not so very good. And so in those cases where there's getting to be a congregation of people down there, that's where now on the enforcement side, I feel like we're, we're pretty aware of that, but probably could pay more attention. Every spring, you have to kind of heighten the awareness. Nothing really happens much down there in the winter. But spring to fall, there are some, some gatherings that take place back in there. Pretty good, quiet neighborhood overall, but just a few things to, to look at.
Thank you. Brian, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question that kind of builds on a comment that Darren made. And this would be a question for Chief Headland. I have also noticed that, that side by sides and ATVs, et cetera, seem to be more common on the greenway than they even were just a few years ago. I, I don't know if that's COVID hobbies or what. Doesn't really matter. I guess my question is, what is our policy for, for enforcing recreational vehicles on the greenway? I'm under the understanding that they're not permitted. So as, as such, what's the city's approach?
That question's for me. Enforcement is, is challenging to say the least. We don't have, as Mr. Melonbrook stated at times, our officers are able to access certain areas of the, of the greenway when there, where there's a paved bike path, we can access those with our patrol vehicles. But we don't have any other, we don't have a UTV, we don't have an ATV, we don't have a snowmobile. So our ability to get to those areas, especially the off-road areas, is very difficult. One of the issues I think with the side by sides especially is since we just relatively recently did allow those to be used on the streets, under, under, if those people have gotten a permit, that creates a potential problem. And I think in the idea of, of some of those people's minds, that they've got that side by side, they've got their permits, now they can go wherever they want. Whether it's education or enforcement, all, all the above, there's a variety of things that we probably need to do to make people understand that they're not supposed to be going back into the greenway with motorized vehicles. But it's, as, as I believe Mr. Demers mentioned, that's been a problem essentially as long as we've had the, the dikes back there. You know, the, the dikes are wonderful and, and they've obviously helped to protect our city, but they also create issues. It's a bit of a, out of sight, out of mind. And to just effectively patrol those is almost impossible for us. We're more than happy in, in virtually all situations that I've been aware of to, to respond to calls of requests for assistance or whether it's trespassers or, or the, you know, unauthorized motor vehicles down there, things like that. I'm disappointed to hear the, the response that Mr. Melonbrook received apparently from, from one of our staff. Obviously I wish he would have called me about that so we could have looked into it when it was more timely and we could actually try to figure out what's going on in that particular situation. But I, I'm well aware that our staff has responded many times in those areas to try to take enforcement action, but it's very difficult to do. And more often than not, we're not even, even able to locate the people.
Thank you. And then just kind of a general comment, I think to Chief Headland, potentially Mrs. Ellis as well, kind of building on the difficulty of enforcing utility vehicles and ATVs down there. Should we be looking at permitting these vehicles and allowing them down on the greenway in specific areas that would help us to control the use down there? I myself don't have a strong feeling in one way or the other, but I do have a problem with not being able to enforce our current policy, if, if that makes sense. So I would encourage staff here to look into the potential for, for allowing that type of use. And that, that may be voted up or down here by the council, but I think it's something we should consider. Thank you.
Megan.
Just so you know, Grand Forks has a greenway ordinance already in place. We have adopted a policy or just rules. And we've talked about putting that into ordinance form, which has kind of been put on the back burner with COVID loans. And it was brought up, I think, about a year ago. And one of those things that was, like I said, put on the back burner. I do believe in those rules that greenway is supposed to be motor-free. So nothing is allowed in there. We had talked about certain areas maybe allowing that, especially by the, where we have the parking lot, boat landings, those areas, stuff like that. Obviously, there's a lot more areas that people go into and there seems to be trails, you know, that are always there. So I guess, you know, that is something up, that's up to the council if they want to continue, you know, mo- motor-free or if you want to allow that. So, but there is something pretty much already ready to go.
Great. Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Mayor?
Motor-free, I wonder if that's a condition of the DNR. That's probably something we'd have to look into.
Not all of the greenway is DNR property.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to make one additional comment. I will work with our city, city engineers, Mr. Emery in particular, and see if I can't get some maps for our staff that would indicate which, particularly which areas are, are private, make it a little bit easier for our staff to be able to respond and, and know what they're dealing with if we do get calls from, from at least like in this neighborhood in particular.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Here's, sorry, one more. Really with the levy, I don't know that we have to differentiate public-private because we're not allowed walking on the levy like through residential neighborhoods anywhere, are we? So I mean, it's probably a good distinction still to have, but I don't think we're allowed to walk on top of the levees through residential areas anywhere in our city, are we? No. So.
No, they are not.
Right.
You're, you're correct. And we've had this discussion numerous times and nobody wants to enforce it, Mr. Mayor. I mean, kids are sliding on, kids are sliding on it and, and, you know, and I get that. So it becomes, it becomes one of those situations on how do you want to deal with it and are you going to enforce it?
You know, it's probably a case, you know, so much of enforcement comes to when it's brought to our attention, when a resident has a concern, you know, that can be part of it. And certainly there has to be a, a lot of uniform enforcement as well. But just as you pointed out, you know, I mow my levy and probably I should wait for the city to do it, but I mow it and just feel like it's a, a public service that I do. Most of the neighbors around there do that. Have I ever ridden a snowmobile up and over behind my house? Perhaps once or twice a week. And so really, it's going to be a little bit selective. These are not the kinds of behaviors we're trying to extinguish. Someone riding a snowmobile over their own levy to go to the river behind their house on the land they own. But someone walking at, at sunset on top of the hill or right after sunset, that's a little different.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, moving on. Number three, review of bid results for 2020 city project number four, street and ADA improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good evening, council. So we received bids for the Demers Avenue Street ADA Improvement Project on April 6th. We did receive a total of three bids with OP Construction being the, the low, apparent little bidder at this time. The low bid did come in about five and a half percent over the engineer's estimate, which again, these type of projects where they're kind of repair work, patch work, that type of stuff, they are, you know, tougher to estimate probably than a, than a large-scale project. So I get it in, I, I really feel that we did receive good competitive bids. I mean, between my estimate and the, you know, the low bidder, you know, we got a difference of about 13,000. And then between first and second bid was a difference of about 17,000. So, so again, I do feel that we, we did receive good bids. At this time, being MinDOT is providing a good share of the funding for this project. There is a cooperative agreement that needs to be fully executed. And then once, as well as a resolution, needs to be executed that I think you passed last week at the city council meeting, but we're just waiting for signatures on those documents. So once we get those documents signed, MinDOT has fully executed them, they will provide a, what they call a bid concurrents letter, which then allows us to award the project. So I'm hoping, you know, we can get all of that in place in the next week and we could look at awarding this project next Tuesday. But if we don't, you know, get all of those signatures, everything in place, we'll just kind of have to hold off on awarding the project. But, so right now, I kind of provided you, you know, with the proposed budget, construction dollars, engineering, construction, administration, construction inspection, all of that's kind of laid out. And then I did kind of provide you the project funding. Again, MinDOT is picking up a bulk of that funding. There was some streetlight wiring, work that was going to be done there that allows us to eliminate a couple of handholds that were in the sidewalks. That came in, the bid cap for that came in at about 8100. I have reached out to Mr. Mickleseth and Water Light has agreed that they would pay for that portion. And then as far as, you know, what I would call city, the city share of the project costs, you know, again, we can use state aid maintenance or stated allocation dollars for that. So, so I guess with that, you know, again, once, you know, assuming we get all the documents, everything in place, we received the bid concurrents letter for MinDOT. You know, my recommendation is going to be to award the project to OP Construction. Again, like I think I put in my letter, I mean, we've, we've worked with OP a lot over the years. I think OP Construction is probably one of the contractors we'd want on a project like this because they're going to get in there, get it done and, you know, really minimize that, that downtime, that sections of Demers Avenue are closed. So I guess with that, I'll open up for any questions you may have.
Seeing none, hearing none. Move on to number four. Thank you. Review of the 2022 federal project information. Mr. Emery.
Thank you again, Mr. Vice President. So I don't know that we need to go through every specific detail here because we've, we've talked about this project numerous times. I did, as I had kind of gave you an update here a few weeks ago, Alliance Engineering did go back, kind of relook at the, the drawings again and kind of made some, some changes. Again, both of these options at this time do include 120-foot Again, both of these options at this time do include 120-foot diameter roundabout. But in your drawing, I have basically option 1A, option 1B. Option 1A is going to require, basically, option 1A and option 1B will require some property acquisition, what I'm calling on the east side of Bigland. We did shift that roundabout further south, again, to minimize that potential property acquisition, just to one property there on the east side. Option 1A, if you look at the drawing, it does kind of push that, I guess, pedestrian traffic that would have to cross Reinhardt Drive there, it does push them a little bit further south with having to put in, basically, that opening in the median there to allow, you know, traffic from the gas station to exit the gas station and get out to Bigland there. You know, right there where we'd want almost the pedestrian traffic to cross, you know, that's where that opening is going to have to be, so it is going to push that sidewalk a little bit further south. So again, with option 1A, we would just have, you know, potentially the one parcel on the, you know, the east side, and then we would have kind of right in the corner there of Bigland and Reinhardt, we would have some property acquisition, you know, we'd have to acquire there. Option 1B, essentially the same, other than the fact of, you know, just showing, would require additional property acquisition just to the south of Orton's there, but, you know, we could potentially have an access point just basically further south there. That would allow, you know, probably a little nicer accessibility for the pedestrian traffic, but would require, you know, potentially additional property there, so. And then option, I guess what I call 2A and 2B, that one, those two options now would not require any property acquisition on the east side of Bigland. Option 2B, again, would provide access from Orton's onto Reinhardt there, kind of pushing it further south, so there would be some property acquisition potentially there. Again, both options, 2A, 2B, again, are going to potentially require or would require property acquisition on that one property, at Bigland and Reinhardt. So, so again, just kind of gave you, again, you know, those layouts were kind of, I think, defined a little bit better, just to really help you give a little bit better understanding of what, you know, may would be, maybe would be required for property acquisition there. So, again, the roundabout right now is estimated about 1.6 million. Again, the property acquisition, you know, at this time, we do not know what those costs would be. I think Mr. Murphy's going to weigh in on that a little bit later here, too. So, again, with Pigland Road, you know, basically for funding on that, we would have the federal sub-target dollars, about 860,000. There is some electrical relocation work there, Water and Light would pick up. And then the balance of that, you know, about 626,000 roughly, you know, again, would be monies from our stated allocation fund. And just so you kind of know, right now, in our municipal, our current municipal construction balance, we're at about 925,000 currently, so we would have, you know, adequate funds to utilize on the Bigland-Reinhardt Drive roundabout, so. And then the next option was 10th Street, which, again, we've discussed quite a bit, but I did give you basically three options. Option one would be total reconstruction of 10th Street from 11th to 5th with curb and gutter paving, and then also the extension of 10th Street going to the geese there for about 1,100 feet, again, with curb gutter paving, storm sewer, looking at a total project cost of about 2.1 million. Project funding for that option, again, for the reconstruction portion, you know, there is about 400,000 there in assessments. We did, at this time, figured the street extension would be 100% assessment. Again, we would receive our federal sub-target dollars, and with that option, you know, just to pick up that balance, we would have about 82,000 roughly in stated allocation dollars that we would have to use. I did put a note in there, though, that approximately 641,000 of that total of about 1.2 million in assessment, about 640,000 of it, or almost 50% of it, is, again, an assessment to the Burlington Northern property on the south side of 10th Street there. So again, like Mr. Goldston said, I mean, we can go through the process, the assessment process, you know, notifying Burlington Northern of the potential assessment and everything, and, you know, it's going to just be a matter of, you know, I guess, if they contest to it, and, you know, would we be able to provide or meet the special benefit test? You know, that's the hard part right now, because if we can't, the city's potentially on the hook for that, let's say, 640,000, so. Option number two, basically, again, would be street reconstruction from 11th to 15th, again, with curb gutter paving. And then what I looked at in option number two was, for that 1,100 lineal feet of extension, we'd basically go in there, we'd core out the street, put in a good gravel base, we'd put it under a drain tile, put in the storm sewers so we have drainage, but not, you know, not do curb and gutter paving at this time. So with that, looking at a total project cost of about 1.7 million, again, I kind of broke down the, you know, the funding for you there and how that would break out. And again, you know, with that option, there's about 428,000 in assessments to the Burlington Northern property on the south side. And then option number three, which Mr. Goldston had kind of asked about, one of the last times we discussed this, was, you know, just even the street reconstruction, if we just tore out the curb and gutter, the paving, you know, put in a good gravel section, you know, what would that cost be? So, so option number three basically would, basically leave the section between 11th and 15th, and then also the extension, you know, we'd basically be left with just a, you know, a gravel road, basically, but, again, it would have, you know, adequate gravel, drain tile, storm sewers, so, you know, would provide all-weather access for those properties. Now, that project cost was almost 1.1 million dollars, so I did provide kind of a breakdown of cost there. Again, with that option, there is about 303,000 of potential assessments to the Burlington Northern property. And then also with option number three, just wanted to point out that, you know, since we don't have about 1.1 million just in construction dollars, you know, we wouldn't be able to utilize the full amount of those federal sub-target funds. So in that case, you know, I'm estimating that, you know, out of the 860,000, we'd probably be able to utilize about 700,000 in federal sub-target funds, so. And then with, again, with all of those project options, I think we'd be looking at replacing the sanitary sewer, which was estimated at about 172,000. The plan right now is those costs would just be, the city would use their sanitary sewer enterprise funds to pay for that sewer, sanitary sewer replacement, so. I did give you, which I think we probably discussed the last time, I did provide you with kind of a project timeline. Again, I think some of the big ones right now would be, would be probably the property acquisition, if we were to move ahead with the roundabout. Again, we're going to have to, by approximately April 1st of 2022, we'd have to have all the property acquisition completed, because we'd have to have plans and specifications, everything approved, and submitted to MINDOT's central office by April 1st of next year, with, you know, bidding the project no later than May of 2022. And again, like Mr. Larson last time alluded to, I mean, we'd like to really bid this thing in December, January, which I totally agree for, and, like I said, these dates I've laid out right now are kind of more of our drop dead deadlines, so, you know, if we can get everything in place and bid it by December, January, February of next year, that would be in the best interest, I think, of everybody, so. And again, just as a reminder for you, currently on the tip is the roundabout project, so if we do decide that we're going to select 10th Street as, you know, our project that we'd want to do, where, again, we'd have to amend the tip and also amend the long-range transportation plan, so. So I think with that, Mr. Murphy, I think you wanted to kind of weigh in too about some of the property acquisition and some of the other things that would need to be done?
Yeah, I guess, well, where I will weigh in on this is, we're to the point here now in this particular, during the process for both of these projects, where we have to choose one for our federal sub-target dollars project, is, we're to the point now, and both of them are, moving forward is going to take some considerable staff time, is going to require use of consultants, that's going to incur cost. So for the timeline here, we're going to need, I guess what I'm going to need from the council if possible, is for the council to pick one of the two projects for which one of us to focus on. And the reason I'll say that is, is because if, for example, if it is the roundabout, we're going to need to get started on the potential property acquisition for that, for picking, you know, which one of the options for the roundabout, and start the property acquisition process on that, which can, which can take some time. And my recommendation to the council would be is that we don't undertake that type of process where we would hire appraisers, start contacting the property owners, in that if we are not seriously moving, considering moving forward with that particular project versus the 10th, the 10th Street project. So what I'm looking for from the council tonight is, you know, if there's any final questions that the council may have for either of the projects, for what's, what the next steps are, what might be needed from staff, and once those have been potentially answered, is some direction from the council, either be by consensus or something along those lines as far as which project we're going to move forward on, and then we'll take some formal action at an upcoming meeting, by designating that as the project that we'll be moving forward with, so that will give staff the opportunity and the authority then to start bringing some of these requests forward for the consultants, and taking action, contacting property owners, doing these types of things for getting those projects in place to be done in 2022. So that is what I'm looking for, so I will take any questions from the council.
Anyone have a question? Mr. Mayor?
So the big two unknowns still kind of glaring at us?
Is, Mr. Mayor, is your mic on?
No. I was trying to do my mime act. So the two questions sort of glaring at us are still, the cost factor that will be offset in the industrial park by adjacent properties to the south, specifically BNSF, American Crystal. They will benefit from a paved road in there to some extent, and we'd have to try to carry that to our usual assessment policy and just show that it's, again, a fair and equitable application of our assessment policy brings us to that, that special assessment on those properties. So that's a big question. It really plays into the total cost that would be used from other sources of funds, and if they couldn't cover that assessment or didn't have a legal responsibility to cover that assessment, then it would, again, come back around in our federal sub-target dollars, and all the rest would be hit. And then the other, so really, that question, the cost that would be shared to the properties to the south, needs to be addressed for us really to make an informed choice, I feel, best we can. And second of all, property acquisition for the roundabout, I understand it's a big question mark, but, again, we need to have an idea of that dollar amount. You know, you'll hear anywhere from zero property acquisition all the way up to a million dollars, and that difference is a game changer, one way or the other. So if it's a zero-dollar property acquisition, probably the roundabout has a chance. If it's a million, probably doesn't have a chance. Those would be bits of information I would like to have. Thanks.
If I may, I can certainly address both of those. For the, I'll take them in order that the mayor put them for. The first one is for Kent Street out there in the industrial park, and the cost, the potential for recouping assessment costs to the property to the south. For this purposes, again, we would, we would move forward, and we would try to get that, but I guess for, for the council's purposes at this point, I would recommend that they move forward with the idea that it will be very unlikely, I would extremely unlikely that we will be able to collect assessments to the south on that for a couple of reasons. Number one is, the railroad is such a limited, it's only, I think, 75-foot right-of-way, they really have no other, no other property other than their right-of-way, and the property to the other side of the right-of-way, of the railroad right-of-way is the American Crystal property. And the situation with the circumstances there, with that, we can make the argument with, but I guess, whether or not we would be awarded full benefit on that, I would find very unlikely. I can see us winning some benefit, but I'm not going to say that it's going to be anywhere close to what the full benefit is. And so then, with the roundabout section, again, you know, there's at least four different options, and those four different options have, you know, varying degrees of property acquisition on that. Residential property acquisition is easier than commercial property acquisition because it's a little bit more straightforward, it's a little, and the rules are a little bit more known on that, and the comparables are there, because there's a lot more residential sales, and for sizing of lots, you know, what is going to be taken out of access, those types of things are much more available for residential property. So the residual portions of it, I could see we could, we could go through the regular process in the time period allowed, and we would want to get, we would get some estimates from our appraiser as far as what that would potentially be. The real unknown is the commercial portion of it, the, with the Ortons, and I don't want to get too far into it, because if we do do, if we do go that route, and we would have, we would have to do some, either condemnation or property acquisition from them, I don't want to get too far into, saying here in a public meeting, what our legal strategy would be on that. But I will say that, in my experience, when we're dealing with commercial properties, it tends to be a very large number to start with, and then you have to meet somewhere in the middle, depending on what, my experience is that they tend to say that it's a complete change, and it's going to be like a full taking. So I don't know whether they're going to do that or not, but, so the property acquisition for the commercial part is a big unknown. But, so the property acquisition for the commercial part is a, is a big unknown. But I was, yeah, I'm not going to hazard a guess a number, but I think we could, we would have a better idea if we moved forward with it and we would be able to, uh, work with a, with a commercial appraiser that specializes in, um, in that type of property acquisition. And there are very few of them that do. Um, the, the best one in my experience is a guy by the name of Jason Mezner. Um, he is out of, uh, the Twin Cities area. Um, and the, he, he said he's, he's very good. It's in there, there, like I said, there's very few, um, in that type of appraisal and, um, professional testimony does not come overly cheap either. Um, so I just wanted to guys make you, make you aware of that. So, um, hopefully that answers your questions on that, Mr. Mayor.
Is there an argument that, that one of these or more than one of these layouts has zero effect on the commercial property? I understand that they need access and egress to, to their property for their patrons and employees. Do one, two, three or four of these arguably have zero effect on the commercial property?
Well, I'm going to maybe ask, um, I'll ask, uh, Steve, Mr. Emery on that first. Do any of, I guess I didn't look that closely to it. Do any of them not require any acquisition from the commercial property, um, at all?
option one A, if you look at that one, basically their, their access onto Reinhardt is basically staying, um,
Well, I guess I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about access. I'm talking about does, if it requires any property acquisition from them.
I think it'd be both.
One A from what I see would not require any property acquisition from Orton's.
Um, But it would change their access points.
It would.
Yeah. So I guess when I take a brush, yeah, okay, go ahead.
One thing, yeah, dude, one A would change their access point at Fifth Street there, um, off of Fifth Street, but it would not change really their access point, um, onto Reinhardt. I mean, I mean, yes, there's a minor change, but you know, nothing, nothing major there, nothing that would require any property acquisition.
Okay. So, so I guess to answer the mayor's question regarding that then, um, yeah, so if it does require property acquisition, we wouldn't have to potentially condemn property from them. It, it makes the process easier. However, they may still argue, um, you know, that, that, that it changes their, the ease of getting in and out of their property, those types of things, and they may make him, may make a claim on that. Um, again, how successful they would be is, is unknown at this point, but, uh, so if we did go with option one A, yeah, in, in, they're good, that does not require property acquisition, that would make it easier, um, but that does not still get us 100% out of the woods for any potential damage claim.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that even if we have property acquisition, it's not going to be a million dollars. If you go with one A, you got an empty lot. There's no way any empty lot in East Grand Forks is worth a million dollars. So like I say, I'm going out on a limb, our property access acquisition is going to be significantly less than $200,000. Uh, if you go with option two A or yeah, two A, get my, all my options here, two A, you don't have any property acquisition. Orton's has still got access just as good as they've got now. So there's zero property acquisition. If you look at 10th street, we keep talking about the south side and whether we're going to be able to special assess them. We haven't talked about the north side and I'm not sure if there's any city property on the north side or if any of those property owners on the north side are going to argue and not pay the full 100% of their special assessments either. So too many unknowns on 10th street, a lot of clear cut stuff on the roundabout. So I'm still with the roundabout. Thank you.
Mr. Helms.
Thank you. What I see happening with the roundabout first thing we're going to do is Mural Court there, we're going to take and we're going to, we're going to jam up the traffic on Mural Court now. We might be loosening it up somewhere else, but Mural Court's going to get jammed up. Fifth, Fifth Street, which is north of Orton's there, that street right north of there. Um, you're moving the, the, you're moving the problem from Reinhardt to Fifth Street, what I can see. Uh, it's going to be a problem there. Those people aren't going to be happy. Um, when you come out of Orton's, um, they will not, from what I see, you won't be able to go right to Bigland Road. You got to take a right turn and go down. Is that correct? Cause that divider's in there? You won't be able to just go right out to the roundabout. You got to take a right and go down to the senior center?
Which one?
Uh, not option one A. Yeah. Option one A, there is a, an opening in that median, so you would be able to, you know, come out of the gas station and, and take a left there and, and then enter the roundabout.
What size of vehicle? Doesn't look like a very big one.
Well, I, again, I think with a larger truck, I mean, you're gonna, your trailer or whatever is going to kind of go up and over that, what I'm, they're, they're kind of calling out as a surmountable island. As far as, um, you know, a normal sized car pickup, um, you should have no, no issue with that.
What about the property owners there that's on the, uh, on the east side of Bigland there? Uh, their driveways are going to come out right at the end of that, right in the end of that roundabout. It's going to be almost impossible for them to get out of there for certain times.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I see a whole place.
And it's actually a thing around the south side of that too there with, with those properties.
Yeah. I mean, the one beauty of it is, I mean, for those properties on the east side, I mean, right now they're trying to back out into traffic that's going 35, 40 miles an hour or where with this roundabout, you're going to be coming through there at 10 to 15 miles an hour or so. I mean, I think backing out of there, it's probably going to be safer for those people. Um, the negative part maybe is if, if they were going to go south, you know, they're going to have to back out, go north for a short distance there and then kind of almost make a U-turn to basically go south again, but.
Yeah. And that's, it comes right back to my point I've been trying to make. The roundabout is not going to help the traffic problem out there. The roundabout is going to slow the traffic down. That's all roundabouts do is slow traffic down.
It's going to provide traffic calming.
The traffic isn't going to flow any differently than what it is right now. It can't because your problem is not, your problem is not at that, won't be at that roundabout. Your problem is up at the stoplight where your problem gets backed up. So your traffic is still going to be backed up here. You're not going to eliminate that problem by putting this roundabout in. There's no way you can eliminate it. Unless you want to take that roundabout, you want to take that roundabout, take that roundabout and move it up to the end of the bridge, get rid of that stoplight. Now you might eliminate that backup problem, but it's not going to eliminate that by, by putting a roundabout in. The other thing is the property owners there in that hole and right in that area, have they had a chance to speak on this at all? Cause I've got an email and I'm sure the rest of you probably did too, that, that, uh, they were supposed to get letters and they say they never got letters. I don't know if they did or not. I was not involved with this thing when it start, uh, when it started, so I don't know. I'm just asking. That's what one, one of the emails that I got told me.
I guess not, no, not at this point. I guess I can't speak about what happened in the, in the past or previously to that. I, I believe there was some things on it, but I guess at this particular point, um, you know, if we're, we're going to be moving forward with it, yeah, we need to, we would need the council to really kind of pick one or the other. Um, the property owners can weigh in on it. Um, I'm going to maybe text, uh, text Nancy's, um, memory here, but I, Nancy, I believe didn't the MPO have some, I, I believe there has been some neighborhood meetings out there. I just don't know how long ago they've been.
And then the other emails I've been receiving is from people out there, and I've talked to people who use Reinhardt a lot. The other emails I've been receiving, and I imagine the rest of you probably get them too, is I've had more people say they'd be in favor of a stoplight there than a roundabout, a programmable one. So you can use it for that half hour in the morning that you need it and then you can, you can turn it off or you can turn it green or you can turn it yellow, whatever you want to do. Uh, that to me, you can put a stoplight in there like that for $250,000. Now you've still got enough money, you can probably go ahead and fix the other street too, if you want. But I'm not getting any clear vibes from anybody out there yet that's in favor of a roundabout there. I've gotten none and I've gotten a lot of, a lot of calls, a lot of emails from people. And to spend, you know, uh, to spend $2 million to put a roundabout in, uh, for a half hour out of the day, it doesn't make sense to me. The other thing that roundabouts, you know, um, I've been doing some checking, uh, Bismarck, North Dakota, uh, actually the county at Bismarck put a roundabout in outside of Bismarck there. And, uh, they're now in the process of taking it out because they've had nothing but snow issues. And since they put that roundabout in, they've had more accidents there than they had before that roundabout was put in that intersection. They found out it did not work, they're taking it out. I'd hate to see us spend $2 million to put this thing in and not have it work like what everybody thinks it's going to do, because I don't believe it's going to solve the problem that I've been told is a traffic issue. I don't believe it's going to solve that problem. So I know that, I know the money's been allocated for that. I understand all this, but the people I've talked to, and, and the other thing is, uh, there's no way you can put that thing in without hurting Orton's, a business. There's no way you can do it without hurting them. That's the other issue I got and, and they're concerned about it. I've talked to them several times. They're really, really concerned about it. So that's my take on the thing. I, I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you again, Mr. Vice President. The roundabout does numerous things. It solves, it slows traffic flow. It allows access, easier access onto Bigland, which is the big concern that no one is addressing with anything. It offers more safety. I have fielded, I don't know how many calls from both citizens in my ward and citizens in your ward about when are we getting that roundabout? And I continue to call, tell them when I know that they're in your ward, that they need to call you and talk to you also, because I know of your opposition against this. So I know a lot of them are, are watching, so I hope and pray that they call you this week and let, let you know their concerns about wanting a roundabout. Uh, a roundabout is also not just for the traffic flow for currently, as our traffic patterns increase in the future, it's going to be a great benefit for future traffic also. Um, I'm a big proponent of, of roundabouts. I've never heard of them taking out the one in Bismarck. I'm going to have to research. I've got a number of relatives in Bismarck, so I'm going to be doing some calling to see why that one was actually taken out. That's the first one that I've ever heard that was taken out. Most communities that after their first roundabout is put in, they're adding roundabouts whenever they can because of the traffic flow that it, it just helps immensely. So as you can tell, I'm a strong proponent of, of the roundabouts and I will continue to push for it because I think it solves so many of the problems within that corridor. And we can't concentrate on just one problem and say that it's not solving that problem. I think it solves numerous problems in that corridor. Thank you.
Mr. DeMerce.
I guess you kind of asked the question I did. Do you know, have any, do you know where that roundabout was? I'm looking right now, I can't find. Is it in Burley County? Is it in?
I think Burley County is the one that paid for it to put it in.
I mean, I'm just looking.
I think Burley County's the one that put it in. They paid to do it.
About, I know Bismarck just.
I don't, I don't know exactly where it's at there. I just know it's around there.
Okay. Well, if you find that, I would appreciate it. I just, um, partially because I was wondering the same thing. Is there a case, and I hadn't heard of any, this would be the first, the exception, I guess, of where people have said this is a terrible idea and let's go back and maybe this is the case and like I said.
This is what happened to people out there. Uh, they, they got together in commission to get that thing taken out because it was a problem.
Well, like I said, I'd like to see what it is and.
Yeah. I'll see if I can get that.
Um, as far as, I think Mr. Vedder started talking about, we've been going, we go through these things quite a bit on MPOs and stuff, so we hear them over and over again. Um, you know, the, the backing, the, the traffic backing up at the stoplight, I don't think this is an issue for this. This, the, the purpose of these roundabouts is for access onto Bigland to make it, like you said, it, to make it safer, to make it, I believe pedestrian safer. Um, and to that point, it, it isn't going to necessarily reduce the number of accidents. It will hopefully eliminate the, the, any, uh, you know, fatal accidents or, um, serious accidents because of the type of traffic. Like you said, they do slow people down and that's the purpose, right? You slow down to speed up. Like if you ever watch, you know, good managed roadways, it's, it's a constant flow. What you don't want is stopping and starting and trying to jam in and, and do those type of things. So what this does is it absolutely slows things down to speed up, um, as a whole. Um, as far as the, I'm just looking back at the Bigland study, to that point, people in this neighborhood, in both of these neighborhoods, on the east and west side of Bigland have, I hope, been engaged, um, in this process. This is the 2016 study, um, that I thought was a pretty good, um, uh, study. It, it was very engaging. We went to, I went to a, a hearing, uh, at the senior center, um, during this process and I was amazed at how many people showed up. I mean, usually you go to MPO or planning and zoning, uh, open houses and, you know, there's a couple of board members and some staff and maybe a couple of people trickle through. I bet there was 30 people there, which is a pretty good number. Um, like I said, it isn't absolutely an all inclusive number, but people have been engaged on this for quite a long time. Um, as part of this study, you know, you, you referenced the, the Mero, uh, Mero Court or Mero Street and what's Mero Court? They have street in here and fifth, you know, fifth in the morning averages 31 cars an hour and in the evening, six cars an hour emptying onto the, taking a left turn onto Bigland, 14 cars in the morning and six cars, uh, in the evening taking a right. Uh, Mero is going to average 29 cars an hour turning right, which is an easy access and 16 in the evening and only three taking a left. Um, these, and that's current, obviously as we grow, um, maybe those will change, but really these are high development areas. They're not going to, the populations of these areas aren't going to change. They're kind of already landlocked. The, the building is where it's at. So I don't see those as being problem areas. Um, what this does is adds access and, um, and better flow for the traffic. Um, I think, you know, I've, I've said I'm, I'm concerned about the, the property acquisition timeline. I, I don't think looking at, you know, the, the actual layouts now, I think if you do an option, uh, one B or a two B, I think you can probably reduce the, the property acquisition amounts pretty greatly, um, and still have quite a bit of access. And I guess, I think some, some opportunities or some potential opportunities there as well. Um, you know, I do, I share some of the concern over assessment on the south side of, um, 10th. I think it is a good project and we should figure out a way to get that road done. Um, but just looking, I think you're going to be left holding the bag, um, for $400,000 coming, or at least, you know, 250, 300,000 dollars coming out of that. So I guess I'm, I'm starting to lean towards getting the, whether you do the option one B or two B on the roundabout, getting those done. Um, I do wonder, you know, I think the, the mayor alluded to it, maybe we should go and have a, a legal discussion or, you know, a legal advice kind of brainstorming event about what our strategy should be, but you know, I think there's an actual property acquisition, but then there's also, you know, access and, and all the, um, you know, kind of things that, that we, we should kind that we, we should kind of consider, I think, and, and going forward. But I guess at this time, I, I think, going forward, I'd, I'd lean towards a 1B or 2B project.
Have those numbers off of Reinhardt also?
Off of Reinhardt?
Yeah, you gave me the numbers off of Marrow and Fifth, you have the numbers off of Reinhardt?
Left turn in the morning off Reinhardt.
Left turn in the morning, up, onto what, Fifth?
No, onto, onto Bigland.
Off of Reinhardt?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Per hour.
Yeah, you give me the other two streets, I'll, I'll know if you have that one.
Right. It looks like turning left off of Reinhardt, I'm trying to follow the thing here, it looks like 88?
Eighty-eight.
And 53 in the evening.
So, really, we're doing this roundabout for those 88?
No, no.
Yeah, that's really what, I mean, that's the, what we're trying to do is improve that left turn access.
For the whole corridor.
Right, because what you're going to do is potentially.
They'll funnel more traffic into there.
Right, because it's going to be the better access, right? Like, so, even, all down that whole corridor, so, you know, all those cars that come from the east, either they're going to go and struggle to get on at 13th and Bigland, or they're going to come down and try to get on where it's much easier, so.
Yep, so maybe you double it.
That's existing.
Maybe you double it. That's really the number, though. It's, it's in that realm.
Well, I can give you the 2025 number.
So, what I'm, what I'm telling you on Bigland Road, if it's, the traffic is as steady and as heavy as everybody says it is, those people off of Reinhardt are not going to get into Bigland Road, even in a roundabout.
Oh, they will.
Very easily.
They will. It'll, it'll be pretty easy in and out. They'll have no trouble arriving.
Huh?
The people in Bigland have the right of way.
All they got to wait for is the people coming down from the north.
And I guess, the other thing, too, is we're, this is, those were 2016 numbers, if you just jump ahead to 2025, already you're looking at 118 cars turning left there, you know, with the growth, everything coming from the west.
And that's 2025, so we're not.
That's 2025, that's like four years from now.
Yep, so it's 100 people per hour, right now, roughly.
Right, and in 2024, or 2040, you're talking 237.
Right on.
So, it, it is a, it's a future thing, and we've talked about this before, I mean, with ICER study and stuff like that, if you look right now, at this point right now, it's, you know, we can do, we can manage it, but what we're trying to do is manage for growth to our south, where we know that there's growth opportunity in that, in that realm. So, like I said, it is, it's, it's definitely a, a good project, it's just.
Real quick, back to 10th. I wouldn't let the, the 50% lack of assessment be the stopper, because whether we do it now, or whether we do it 10 years from now, that street will only be half locally assessed. So, whenever we do it, about half of that money's going to have to come from outside of that area, and that's our federal sub-target dollars, right? So, no matter when, I mean, it's not like, oh, well, maybe if we wait one, two, three, four, five years, we can assess that group to the south. No, if this is ever going to get done, this 10th, it's going to need outside money to the tune of about 50% of project cost. So, if it's a priority for our community as it grow, as we grow our industrial park, as we serve the current occupants of the industrial park, the very fact that this is going to need close to $1 million outside of that area to get it done is a given. If it, it's a given if we do it now, or one, or five, or 10 years, and so, we won't be surprised, and it won't, you know, baffle us, we'll just say, we're going to have to come up with a source of about $1 million to get that done, from whatever source. And so, really, that's not a discouragement, it's just one of the ground rules that we're going to have to work with.
And to that point, I think, and I've thought about that, too, is, you know, at some point, I've said, all three of the projects that were listed are great projects in their own right, and I think at some point, they're all going to get done. The one thought I had about that 10th is, you know, there's some things that are going through, or that, at least the legislature's starting to talk about is, you know, industrial park infrastructure grants, those type of things that maybe we could take and leverage, I, like I said, I don't know if the legislature's actually written the legislation yet, but those are things that are in the works as far as, you know, and maybe Mr. Gordy at some point, you know, if we say that this is a target of ours, we want to develop to that east side, we want to, we want to develop industrial park space out there, that's something we can direct staff to kind of keep on the lookout of. How can we leverage money, you know, outside of just transportation dollars, but is there industrial park dollars or infrastructure dollars? We're hearing about a $2 trillion infrastructure thing, maybe that's where we can find that matching dollar. And, and, you know, maybe it'll come about, if we have that as a targeted priority, maybe that, you know, maybe that's where you find that.
And again, I don't, I don't know who I all provided the information to, but I think even right now, there is funding through EDA, you know, if we were able to show that, you know, this, by doing this project is going to create, you know, job opportunities, that type of stuff, there is, you know, funding opportunities out there right now through EDA, so, like you said, Mark, I think, you know, with that being an industrial park, there is potentially other funding options we could look at also, or look at. And the other thing, kind of to your point, Mayor, is, you know, again, just keep in mind for those, you know, potential costs on the south side of Reinhardt, again, we do have currently about 925,000 in our municipal construction dollars that we could use to help offset those costs, too, so. So, I think right now, we do have money available if, you know, if we weren't able to assess those properties on the south side.
You mentioned Reinhardt, you, you mean, you mean 10th Street, great.
10th Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 10th Street, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Council Vice President. I've been on record as being in favor of the traffic circle, nothing has changed, I'm still in favor of the traffic circle. My preferred design is option 1B, but I would be open to the other options, kind of based on the, the estimated cost of the property acquisition. But in general, 1B would be my personal preference, but again, open to all four of the options, but to, you know, put a button on it, mark me down for the traffic circle. Thank you.
Mr. Helms.
I was going to just, just to throw it out there for the council, I mean, I think at this point, too, you know, whether it's 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, whatever, I, I don't think we have to decide that tonight, I think it's just really, or I shouldn't even say tonight, but I think what we're looking for more than anything is, do we want to do the roundabout, or do we want to do 10th Street? If we choose the roundabout, you know, then we can work through, you know, what is the best option, what's going to require the least amount of property acquisition, that type of stuff, so.
Mr. Helms.
Thank you. The, the problem that I have, how long ago, how long ago did we redo the end of Reinhardt Drive there by Bigland to make that and put that divider in there? How long ago did we do that? How much money did we put in there for that? I don't know what it is either, but, but the thing is, we're sitting here talking about tearing up two perfectly good roads in the city, two perfectly good roads, and we have so many other streets in this city that need work so bad, and we can't even do it. It's, it's, it's just, it's bad that we're tearing up two good roads to put in this thing here when we can do some good and fix some roads that really need help. That's my point.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Move on to number five, discussion on liquor license fees.
Mr. Vice President, can I, can, can we go back?
Sure.
So, have, I guess, what I originally had stated in there, because I was kind of hoping that we could get some sort of direction on that, so, a consensus potentially, and I know we're, right at the moment, we're missing apparently two, two voting members, but would it be possible to take a poll, or do something to kind of see where we're at? Or, because I guess the question, why this was brought up and why we're bringing it is that, we're kind of getting to the time, we're getting to the timeline now where we have to really start putting some effort into whichever project we're going to do. And like we talked about just a little bit ago for the timing of it, whether it be property acquisition, designing, those types of things, and we want to get those bid out, we, it's to the point where we should probably start moving on that, so. I don't mean to kind of be a stickler on that, but if, if we could get some sort of direction on, on what we should be focusing on.
How about a roll call vote at the next council meeting? How would that be? For one project or the other?
Yeah, we could do that.
A week too late?
Okay.
Nope, no, yeah, yeah, I'll bring that forward.
And vote, and.
For next, next week, you mean?
Yes. We can do that, while we put that on the agenda.
Thank you, Vice President.
That sounds perfect, thank you.
You ready, Megan?
Trying to get through this as quickly as possible. I've received the information for the liquor license renewals, and it had been mentioned by a couple different times about the possibility of reducing their liquor license fee for the year. For last year, we did not do anything. On the off sale, it's only $150 a year, on the on sale, it's $4,000 a year, they were reduced by 25%, so we only charged $3,000. I just wanted to ask if you guys were still considering reducing those fees, and if so, I would like to send that information out with the renewals. Is that something you would like to consider, or are we going to keep things as is?
Any thoughts? Mr. Helms.
Thank you. I'd be in favor of reducing that, to do something for them, because I'll tell you what, these, like these service clubs and stuff, they're still not doing real well, they're still struggling. It's going to be a while for them to get back, you know, until, at least until our governor opens it up, which hopefully it'll be soon, but I think we need to do something to help them a little bit this year again, and then, and then get back to the normal, probably in '22 then.
Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilman Helms, I think that's the right thing to do for these businesses that have shouldered more than their fair share of the burden.
Talking at 25% or 50% or?
Well, I'd be open for 50%. I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Anyone else in agreement?
I would agree.
I'm in favor of a reduced, I don't know if I'd go the 50%, I think I would do the 25 that we did last year. Last year, they were closed a lot longer than what they've been closed this year.
This year.
They're not at 100% occupancy yet, but I can go either way, I guess.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you.
Um, is this for on sale, off sale, all sale?
I would say probably just on sale.
Because that's what we did last time, right? We just did the on sale.
Off sale is only a $150 fee for the year.
I would do the on sale for the quarter.
For what?
25%.
25% reduction.
I too am in favor of the 25%.
I'm okay with that, too, I just, nobody else will say anything, so I just threw a number out, I'm okay with the 25.
And if by year-end it's not going well, I mean, if by some weird fluke, COVID kicks up again, we could always cut it back at the end of the year if it was, if it was necessary.
Okay, absolutely, that helps. I will probably prepare a resolution for next week, just stating what we're doing, I'll, we'll leave the off sale alone, just on sale, at 25%, we don't have any on sale beer or wine right now, so it's just the 4,000. So, I'll bring that to the next meeting. Should I move on to number six?
Number six, request for direction on right-of-way usage, Megan.
Okay, I got a call from Mindot this last week, and I get, I just need direction from you guys, I have not spoken to the business directly on this, so I don't know exactly what they're looking for, but just based on how last year went, so, we're going to have, one, possibly two businesses looking at probably more permanent use of our public right-of-way, meaning the sidewalk spaces in our downtown area. Most of our restaurants already have an outdoor space, but the question came up about the right-of-way along Demers Avenue, east of Fourth Street, so if you're at the traffic light, it would be coming towards City Hall. I was informed by the Mindot office in Kirkston that that is actually our right-of-way, not theirs, and so, if, if the business there is looking at wanting to do something more permanently in the summer, you know, spring, summer, fall months, we do currently have a permit and then part of the ordinance where you can fill out the application, and it's for private use of a public sidewalk. I'm, would like to know, do you want to leave things as is? Should we draft an ordinance so we don't have to deal with a permit every year, you know, specifically lay out what's there? Or are you guys not interested in doing that at all, and once the mandates are gone, just not having those spaces be allowed to be used? So, kind of three different options. How do you like to see it? Or you can think about it, and we can bring it back, because I know it's already been a long.
Mr. Vedder.
Okay, I'll start it. I like the idea of outdoor seating, so I guess I don't want to see them go away, whether we solidify it into an ordinance or just leave it as a permit, I don't know the pros and cons of either one, I guess. Permits, I suppose, are more work for you versus having the ordinance?
It would be, and so I guess, we can go either way, but I don't know exactly how things will look, I would like to talk to the business as well and just kind of see what they were thinking, you know, would we require something more, a somewhat more permanent structure? I realize we don't want permanent things out there kind of blocking off that space, or, you know, how do we want that addressed each time?
Maybe we probably should get some ideas and, and put it into an ordinance as far as, you know, numbers and how many tables they could have, or how much they could obstruct the sidewalk, and at least then it's concrete and we've got something to hang our hat on.
Okay.
I'm kind of leaning towards that as, thinking as I'm talking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor.
I sure agree with, with Mr. Vedder that it turns out that outdoor dining is pretty nice, and so, having that available is good. If it would help to create some guidelines, that would be a template for them to apply against those guidelines, I think that'd be a very helpful thing, and if that requires an ordinance to streamline and, and, you know, like maybe a residual width of concrete, so after their seating is in place, how much additional sidewalk must remain, you know, still available for walking on. So, all that stuff could be spelled out, and then they would just apply against those parameters instead of maybe reinventing the wheel each time, probably would help it out for everybody.
Okay, I will put something together and bring it back to a future work session for you guys to take a look at before we move forward with that.
Hey, Megan.
Any other questions on that? Okay, I'll move on.
Number seven, discussion on special events.
Okay.
I know.
Okay, I had notified you guys that we were, a special event was going to start being advertised for back in March, the Spud Junior would like to hold an event like they did last August, blocking off a portion of Third Street, keeping that access to the Cabela's parking area there, just kind of blocking off to the alleyway, and they'd like to hold a couple concert, or I think they have two people lined up to come and do some live music on May 22nd, so they're looking for permission to block the street off and hold that event. I did talk with the Department of Health, the inspector for our area, and she understands, you know, the, understands how big that space would be, based on current mandates, she said that, you know, that space should be able to hold 250. I do believe this time around, instead of doing picnic tables, they're going to encourage people, if they want to sit, to bring their own chairs, so people will be sitting in chairs out there. So, that part, I, do you guys have any questions on that event?
When they held that event last year, or whatever it was, two or three, there was no issues with it, was there? I mean, no, no problems or anything?
Nope, no, I, I can double check, but I was not made aware of any issues from that event. At that time, they had picnic tables and made everybody stay at their table, this time, I, like I said, they're just going to have, I do believe people bring their chairs. The other question that I have for you with this. chairs. The other question that I have for you, with the Spud Junior doing Rockin' Up North Fest, they would like to have that event three nights in August, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. What they are looking for is to have a minimum of four thousand people each day. We don't know what the restrictions are going to be at that time, and it was asked that, you know, will the council support that event with those restrictions being unknown? If, if I, there is a calculator on, I think it's the Department of Health's website. I went on the county GIS, I figured out the square footage of the area that they would like to use. It's about fifty-eight thousand square feet. Putting that into an unseated venue in that calculator puts that at about five hundred and fourteen people. Even, even adding the additional fifteen percent, it doesn't get them close to the number that they're looking for as a minimum. So would you guys support that event being held in East Grand Forks, not knowing what the restrictions would be, or should we possibly suggest that maybe just this year, they try and find a venue elsewhere, and then it'll come back? They said, I've been told it's the East Grand Forks event. They want to be in East Grand Forks, but there's just some unknowns right now. I do know that Kicking Up Country Festival is going to be held, supposed to be held in June up in Carlsted. I've tried to find information on that. At this time, if the concert's canceled, there's no refunds. I was not able to find anything at, because they're located outside of town. I was not able to find anything on the, on their county site, kind of if they approved anything, or that is private property, so there is a bit of a difference there. Also, I've been hearing ads for WeFest, and at this time, on their website, I did not find anything for Becker County. Again, it's private property, so a little bit different than the circumstance. But they do have, if it is shut down due to COVID, there, that you can get your, a refund back. So other than that, right now, I don't have anything else to compare it to. So, you know, looking for direction from you guys.
Kirkston has Ox Card Days. They have some similar way of bands playing in the park.
Yep.
Have you talked to them?
I have not. I forgot about Ox Card Days, so I can reach out to them and find out. Do you got, do you have a feeling either way, Mayor?
I prefer to keep it, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, at the very least, make a fresh contact to the governor's office and see if there is any other little workaround that could be done. They got to understand that when you're bringing in these, this level of entertainment, it's going to be a financial commitment, and you have to try to follow through on it if you can. And so I think, and I appreciate, Megan, all the work that you've put into it, working through that website, putting in the square footage with the formula that we're offered right now. And yet, I think we should make a direct contact and try to get some kind of commitment from the governor, and even if it's, look, this is how we believe it's going to be at that time, and, and hang on to that event as long as we can. It definitely is an East Grand Forks event. They want it here, we want it here, and we'll try to find a way to, to get it done.
What else? Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I would just, I guess my comment would be, this is, on the Rockin' Up North Festival, this is a, you know, it's a tough one for this city for us to comment here. I mean, I certainly wouldn't advocate that we do anything stricter than the state of Minnesota would, would ever impose, but to say that we could do anything less strict than what the state is requiring, certainly we can't commit to that either. So we want this event here. You know, I think everyone would agree with that, and we would do everything we can to make it a success. But again, we are obviously subservient to the state of Minnesota, and we have to follow, we have to be in compliance there as well. So, but we would never do anything stricter than what, or I wouldn't advocate that we do anything stricter than what the state mandates.
Okay. So I will check with Kirkston and kind of see what they have planned. Oh, I will also check with, like, Polk County Fair Board and see if any of the fairs are being planned for this year, and then I'll also check with the governor's office. And hopefully I can have some answers by the end of this week, because I know that they've obviously already put some planning into this, and we'd like to know what to do. So I'll probably just maybe, depending on how things come back, either bring it back to a work session, or send it out in a memo to update you guys on where, what answers I get.
Good luck on the answer from the governor's office, but no one else has been able to get an answer out of there, so. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Vice President, could I just?
Yes, sir.
If this won't take long at all, I just wanted to make you guys aware, we, I believe some of the council members have probably been getting some phone calls regarding this, and I received a request for the council to see if the city would weigh in on this. So far, I've not received the, any feedback from council members that have contacted me about it, that there is a willingness to do that. But the Polk County Planning and Zoning is apparently going to have, their planning commission is going to have a vote or a public hearing, and potentially a vote next Friday, the twenty-third. I just wanted to guys make you aware that you guys might be getting some phone calls or something about that. There's apparently been some pressure mounting lately to have the city weigh in on that. But at this point, our, whatever is the position, our position is that, yeah, that's outside the city, and we really have no comment on that. So I just wanted to guys make you aware that that is coming up, and you might be fielding some phone calls about that.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, motion to adjourn. Mr. Helms, second by Mr. Larson. All in favor?